It's six o'clock on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. We'll call this Hermosa Town Board Regular Meeting to order. Roll call. Kramer's here, Ferguson?
Here.
Coates?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Service?
Here.
Very good. The whole board's here. We'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. We have some new people in our audience tonight, some people from the municipal league. We have a school, high school student here from government class. And of course Laura's here from paper. And we have some construction folks here that will, and we'll get into all these things a little later. Everybody, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Two is call for changes, a review of the current agenda items, and a motion to accept the agenda as presented or amended. And I believe we have at least one amendment.
Yes.
Which would be under Planning and Zoning C.
Yep.
And that will be a...
It's an FYI, it says temporary sign permit.
FYI, temporary sign permit. Okay? Anything else? Anthony, you good with your section?
Yes.
Okay, Kent, you good with your section?
Yeah, on there it would be a brief discussion of a MOU that Cal has had me review. And then also just a brief discussion with the Silver Smith Agreement.
So we'll add a B and a C to legal?
Sure. Then you could move fourteen A. Is that a MOU for FEMA?
Yeah.
Silver.
So it's under new business, fourteen A.
Fourteen A moved to legal? Okay?
So we'll move that to FEMA.
Yep. Okay. And then we'll have some discussion under legal also about the town's ability to donate. All right. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the changes in the agenda and current agenda.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Cal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried, thank you. Consent calendar, approval of the November 19th regular meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll motion to approve.
Thank you, Aaron. Second?
Also good.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Any questions or comments on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Four, conflict of interest. Please declare it if you have it. Five, South Dakota Municipal League Work Comp. This is our newbies in the audience tonight. Thank you very much for coming. And thank you, Brad. We appreciate it.
Thanks, President Kramer.
I'm only here in case of a technology failure, so Brad's gonna lead this.
Okay. Go forward.
We have experience with things going wrong and it's good to have an extra, extra body in the audience, so.
It's good to have you.
Um, so I was asked to, to attend the meetings. There was a question about volunteers, you know, how volunteers are covered. Um, and I guess I just might go specifically, um, like there's a particular question there. Cause I mean, I can tell you what the statute says about volunteers and public entities. Um, it's a some protocol I lost in the meeting, uh, one thousand five point one. Basically it just says that public entities, meaning cities, towns, counties, and, uh, can appoint volunteers to, to volunteer work for the city. And to do that, to comply with, uh, to trigger the Congress to comply with the statute, you just have to name them in the minutes and approve them for the volunteer duties that they will be doing. Now, my understanding, we have, um, Dan has some paid duties, he has some volunteer duties. And I guess I'm just kinda here to help sort out how to handle that from the work comp standpoint. Does that, does that sound accurate?
Yes.
So, um, do you want me to keep going or is there, are there any specific questions?
Well, from the past, after the flood, when we had volunteers, we've tried to keep a very good record of how many hours they were putting in, what days they were working, um, of course their names. Um, but at that time, I don't think we were super specific about what they were doing. It was work to do with the flood. So how specific do we need to be?
Well, uh, according to the Director of the Department of Labor, you need to be pretty specific. Because it's, if this is, this isn't our rule. We're just trying to help, we try to help our members cover the volunteers that they wanna have covered and if that's their intent to do so. And if you do nothing, if you don't, you know, have a list of volunteers or name a volunteer digitally and approve them, they're not covered under your work comp coverage. Now keep in mind, you don't want, you probably, you wanna talk to your city attorney, but I would guess that you don't want the risk of covering every volunteer that does any little thing for the city. Typically volunteers, we see them in emergency services, fire, ambulance, um, search and rescue, um, librarians a lot of times, if you have a library or a museum, we see that. Parks and Rec, there's some volunteers there. Those are the most common types of volunteers. If you're having a skinny cleanup day or there's an emergency like a flood, which we've had this happen a lot over the east side of the state, you're in no obligation to cover anybody for work comp purposes. Work comp is designed to cover employees, paid employees. But because public entities, uh, have kind of a unique, they're, they're unique in the way that they do have volunteers. Um, the commercial insurance market won't cover volunteers, uh, generally, um, for the most part. They, uh, so we're kinda unique in, I mean, we can say that we don't wanna cover them, but we do. And that's one of the things that makes us unique in providing your coverage. But to do that, you just have to comply with the, with the statute. It's a two-step process. It's who are you and we're proving you to do certain duties. Um, that's, you know, in your case, the flood, I, I completely understand. I'm from Burke, that's, I grew up in Burke and my mom lives right on Main Street. We had a tornado there in, in 2019. Um, and there were volunteers flooding in from everywhere. Uh, the fire chief was also the incident commander. And, uh, they kept a list of all the volunteers and they gave them duties, but they did not cover them for work comp purposes, cause that's not the intent of work comp. Um, but in this situation, it sounds like you have one person who's, who's doing various things for the city and that's, and that's totally fine. Um, you can appoint him, like to be covered for work comp while he's doing various volunteer duties for the city. Now you don't wanna, yeah. But I guess I don't know what, uh, how many things are being done as far as what, what's the scope of the activities? Are the streets and roads, is it snow removal?
Streets and roads.
Landfill, meter reading. So I guess that's, I'd be able to answer more specifically if I know exactly what you're trying to accomplish.
Okay. Are you ready to? Okay, so, um, Dan Halsworth is, who is doing our, the maintenance on our roads? We do pay him, but the intent in that pay was to cover the fuel in his machinery. We do not own any machinery. So he has to use all of his equipment. He volunteered his time, but, but we, he, he actually volunteered. As a board, we decided that he needed to be paid for his fuel and possibly some wear and tear on his equipment. And so because we're having, you know, writing him a check for the fuel and it, and he opted for basically kind of a flat rate on everything, as I recall. Um, uh, that's where the question comes in, I guess.
Okay. Like I clear things up a little bit, that, that's an expense reimbursement, that's not pay. That's not payroll, it's not remuneration. It's, it's not what we would use to calculate, um, you know, uh, the contribution or the coverage for, you know, for his duties. That's, that's expense reimbursement. So he's still a volunteer, even doing those duties.
Okay. All right.
If I may.
Yeah, Dan, we'll talk now.
Hey Brad, how are you?
Hey Dan.
Good to see you, man. And Gary, thanks for being here.
I can't hear you.
You can't hear? Come on, come on up here where the speaker's better.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, I got you, Dan.
Okay. My whole intent, Brad, is not to be on work comp. I never asked for that. Uh, don't care about that. Um, I'm on my own ticket. The only thing I wanted was the ability to work for the town on the streets, on the volunteer basis. So I'm not looking to be on the work comp. And I really don't care to be on the work comp for the town's purposes. So I don't want that against them on their insurance side of it. I don't want them to have to deal with paperwork and hours and accountability either. So the main thing is, is that I can be a volunteer without being on work comp, do my own thing. Of course, through my company, I have everything and my abilities that I ever need anyway. So is that an approvable situation?
Well, I, I can only speak from the, the workers' compensation part. And then that doesn't, that doesn't affect the work comp at all. There's no reason from a work comp standpoint that, uh, um, that you can't do that. So, you know, I recommend the city talk to, I'm assuming the South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance is your liability carrier. They have a little different answer on, on volunteers, which be, which is good for you. But I, I, I can't answer questions, um, for them. But from a work comp standpoint, yeah, there's no reason you can. I mean, if you don't, if you're not asking to be covered by work comp and the city doesn't, doesn't approve you for that, that still doesn't mean that you can't volunteer.
Good, good, yep. That answers my question and...
Yeah, there's, there's volunteers all over the place, in cities and counties, um, that are covered by the work comp. And they continue to volunteer, of course, with the city's blessing.
Thank you.
Which it sounds like you have.
Yep, nope, I like that, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay. So then another question, Brad, and now that, after listening to you. Um, the town is gonna be having its first Christmas parade of lights and with a lot going on that day. And so we're, we're volunteering, a bunch of us, to make the float, to build the float, to, uh... And so do we need to make sure that everybody is written down for that? I mean, we all, most everybody that will be helping is some sort of an employee of the town. Either a board member, office staff, um, contractor, so on so forth.
Yep. Yep. Uh, so I'm not an attorney, so I'm not going to, uh, this is not legal advice whatsoever. And I'm not intending to give legal advice.
Okay.
Um, but if it is a city float, so this is a city float, it's, uh, the town promotes a float, is that right?
Well, yes, except for that nothing is owned by the town. The trailer's not owned by the town, you know, the, the stuff on it won't be owned by the town. It'll just be lent to the town for use.
Yep. Yeah, that's, ownership is, doesn't affect, um, your coverage. Now if you're having city employees and, and the town board, um, is doing the work, it, even though it doesn't fall technically within the scope of an elected official or as a paid employee, whether it's, you know, office staff or really any other, but it would be looked at, the Department of Labor would look at it that it benefits the city. And so therefore, the activities that you're doing while, while building the float, um, you know, it's promoting the city, it's benefiting the city, more than likely, and I'm just saying in general terms, cause every injury and incident has its own specific set of circumstances, um, and facts. But generally speaking, if it's for the benefit of the city, um, and the, the employees and elected officials are, are working on that and it's, even if it's not required, but it's recommended that, that everyone pitch in, it's probably gonna end up, uh, if there's an injury, it probably would end up being a compensable injury.
Okay. All right. Terry, are you, did you get all the information you needed?
Yeah, just, um, so when we had done our minute spread in October, we had stated we had two volunteers and they, and there was the intent of the town to cover them under our work comp. So do I need to go back now and say, and we never added, um, Dan to the, to the work comp? So I just, do I need to crack those minutes or that motion?
Um, yeah, well, are those two volunteers, so they're not, the town's not...
Well, Dan just said, he, Dan just said he doesn't wanna be under the work comp. And the motion was to cover both him and then Trina, who's doing our, um, website design. So there was a specific motion saying the town was going to cover them under the work comp.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm sure you're a city attorney, I don't know, is your city attorney in the room?
He is. Kent, hey.
Okay. Thank you. I assumed that was him, but I wasn't, I wasn't positive, so. But I mean, I, to me, I mean, documentation, it never hurts to hold a document. I mean, I don't, I don't really, is that, you know, rules or meeting rules? But I don't see any harm in being clear that, you know, we're covering this person or we are not covering this other person.
That, I would, I would generally agree. They, there's a couple of things that play into it also. Is it a, it is, is it a, is it a municipally, uh, endorsed or, or created event? Um, or is it more like a, the, the economic growth and development private group? And if this is a city sanctioned event, that all, that also adds another layer of potential liability. Um, as far as labor goes, uh, if a volunteer is injured, um, you could do a couple of different things. Uh, one, it's clearly not an employee. It's a volunteer for a very specific reason, very limited circumstance. Um, a waiver of a, a waiver of claim, uh, may be appropriate in certain circumstances. Uh, it's not, again, it's not something where anybody's being paid for. And as you brought up, with, if it's something that, well, it's not mandatory, but it, you'd better, better be there to show your spirit, you know, type of thing. Uh, little, being a little bit obligatory, then that's where you get into that gray area. Well, no, I had to be there and I got hurt when I was there. So again, very fact driven. But there are some fundamental things, fundamental underlying circumstances that we can affect. We can, we can maybe take in short circuit some of the issues that might give rise to a claim.
Yes, correct. And you know, and I'm sure, you know, as the, the waiver, you know, really kind of pertains more on the liability side. Um, the work comp side, I mean, it's, yeah, waiver away, um, if someone is deemed to be, you know, uh, in the course and scope of their employment.
Right.
Uh, I mean, that's what the attorney's telling me. My opinion is that it shows intent, that they will, they agree and they intend to be a, an employee. But either way, I mean, ultimately, Department of Labor and, and if so case, you know, the courts would decide. But, um, yeah, and I'm just talking on the work comp side, which means injuries too. People who are either employees or, or volunteers that are intended to be covered. Um, the liability side of it's a whole other, I don't handle that part of it. Um, but what you're saying is, is accurate from what I, from what I know.
And there's also kind of the inverse aspect of it too. Um, it's like when I volunteer for Junior Achievement or something. We all sign, uh, documents, uh, agreeing that we won't do anything that would, you know, reflect poorly, those kind of things, or, or harm or injure anybody. So there's, it's kind of a code of conduct, in other words. And a volun, you could call it a volunteer's code of conduct. They acknowledge they're a volunteer, they're not an employee, um, they're not, they're here of their own volition. Those kind of things. I mean, all that, from a factual standpoint, helps.
Correct. Yeah. I'd agree.
Okay. Everybody's clear? Dan, Deb, you, okay? Anybody else in the room have any comments? All right. We're good, Brad. Thank you so much for coming and joining us.
By the way, President, uh, President Kramer, this, if, if anyone's thinking of what's the big deal about this, this is the number one question about, about volunteers for, um, going on 17 years now. It's the number one question that I get. We get them, we get these questions, I mean, weekly. So, I mean, it's, it may seem like a simple thing, but, um, as you can tell, this is, you know, there's, there's some gray areas, um, and all you can do is try to, you need to decide what your intent is and, and work within the statute. So, um, yeah, well, I appreciate you having me and giving me the opportunity to be there. I wish, if it had been one more day tomorrow, I'm heading out that direction anyway. But I wasn't, I'm not moving to Mariposa, that's the person.
Well, come visit us anyway.
All right. Well, and, uh, thank you, Gary, for making the trip down from Rapid.
Thanks, thanks.
Beth?
Thank you. Do you wanna stick around for the rest of our meeting?
I gotta go to my chat.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So President Kramer, I, I wanna apologize, I didn't even introduce myself.
Well, I...
I'm Gary Drews and I work for Brad.
Okay.
Uh, and we do the administration and marketing for the SDML work comp fund, so.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate you being here.
Absolutely.
You, you're welcome to stay also.
I, I understand that. Terry had told me that.
Grab a piece of cake or a cookie, honey.
But I'm gonna take my wife and we're gonna leave.
Okay. All right. I understand. Well, that was, that was kind of her to join you on a work excursion there. Oh, there you go.
I must have had dinner or something.
And where'd you have dinner?
Right across the road over here.
Uh, lazy R.
Lazy R.
Yeah, good. Very good. Glad to hear that.
Yeah. Yeah, she didn't have to cook.
That's great. Thank you, drive safe.
Yep.
All right, so that's, uh, section five. Any other questions or comments?
Do the minutes need to be amended or added or changed?
Well, I think we need to clarify the minutes in tonight's. I don't know that anything really needs to be changed, but just a clarification.
I just want her to get her answer.
Yeah.
From that.
Yes. Very good, thank you. All right, that brings us to Anthony Engineer, sir.
Okay. So, if you don't mind me gonna go CVA, if that's okay? Cause you guys are also exposed by that.
We're fine.
So, the first thing is, uh, our first project that's gone off to bids, I mean, on my tenure, um, is our good expansion. Um, so obviously, um, we're dealing with, uh, two funding sources. And so, does everyone have these two papers? Cause they kinda came in, cause you did the bid on them yesterday.
They're just not in order now, cause you know, when you get to us.
They were separate.
Okay.
So, we opened the, the bids yesterday. Um, we basically gave a month, um, to, for the contractors. We advertised on BidNet, which went out to a huge audience. Um, we had, uh, people asking questions from Minnesota to Montana, Wyoming, um, you know, multiple states. So, um, in the end, uh, I think a lot had to do with liquidated damages with the local contractors, because we had to pass our fees that the state is charging us for this project not happening. We had to sign a consent agreement and everything. So we had to pass those on to the, whoever takes the contract, because once we hand over the, the job, it's timeline, timelines controlled by them. And so they had to start by April, uh, first, I think it was, and then end by October 31st, or else they incurred $12,500 and then a hundred dollars a day each time they missed one of those two deadlines. So, um, so that was, was partly the reason, um, that we had a reduced amount of response. But we still got two bids. Um, we opened them yesterday at 2:00 PM. Um, so the two bidders, I put a summary page. Um, but the, uh, uh, prospect construction out of Sheridan, Wyoming, came in at, uh, $2,393,749. Um, also the interesting thing is these two bidders both attended our pre-bid meeting. No one else attended. So maybe that's an indication of interest. So, and then the second bidder, uh, Baroque Advantage, came in at $852,418. So, um, I, the, the engineer's estimate for this, for this scope, that contract, was $890,780. Um, every bidder, including these two bidders, bidders that didn't end up bidding, all had asked me and had, it was, I believe in the addendum, what was the engineer's estimate? Cause they have the right to do that in order to get their, to determine their bid by. And so every single one of them, I said, $900,000 to $2,000,000 is our, is our budget. And a lot of this is public knowledge, right? Everybody knows what our SRF loan is, what our ARPA was. Um, you've seen engineer's estimates in this, uh, in this board. So there's not a lot of secrecy when it comes to these numbers, which is somewhat, somewhat a little weird, but, uh, it's the nature of, of it. And so it's very strange that the one bidder out of Wyoming came in so high knowing that I told them in the pre-bid that we have $900,000 to $2,000,000. So, so that being said, um, I had the one, the low bidder, um, provide me with some references, because I needed to have references, um, to make a recommendation. And so, um, the first, uh, he gave a list in his packet, but I asked for telephone numbers and contacts. So, um, I contacted Ringle Construction and spoke to the project manager, Royce Rents. I have a cellphone there. And so actually I made a little table of our conversations. So I asked three questions to each of these references. I said, are you familiar with BA, I'm gonna call him, uh, and where did they work for you and with you? And Royce Rents said, uh, yes, they worked with us at Terry Peak. So that reference, uh, matched with what they had written in their bid packet. And I asked how to, Royce, how did they perform? And they said they did excellent, they were great to work with, and finished on time and in budget. And the way this works, and then I said, would, would you use them again? And he said, yes, absolutely. And the way this works when I ask references questions is I don't do much of the talking. I just ask the question and I let them go. Because if it's a bad reference or somebody's gonna say something bad, they're not gonna hold back. They're gonna talk my ear off for 20 minutes, you know? And I've had this happen to me before, so. And the, the most difficult thing is when you have one tell you something and then, you know, go in a bad way and then the other one goes in a good way. So then who do you believe, right? So, um, but so then I asked, I had to get that second, um, uh, reference. And so the second reference is Lonnie Mourning, who's a project manager from BL Harbor International. That's a federal contractor working at Ellsworth Air Force Base. Um, he actually had a lot to say, uh, positive about, uh, Baroque Advantage. He said that, I asked if he's familiar with it and he volunteered all this information, right? So he said, yes, uh, they're a sub for us at Ellsworth Air Force Base doing earthwork and civil contracting. And he said that project is a $200 million project, so it's going on for quite a long time. Um, and then I said, how did they, how did they perform or how are they performing? And he said he was very happy with the performance, they're continuing, they're still working there. And he said he's running a TopCon GPS system. He has his own equipment and it's all new and the latest technology. So, um, that was interesting that, you know, he was talking with the actual, cause it's all earthwork, right? The, the work that, that this contractor's doing for this, um, G, this general contractor. And so, um, so that was relative, relevant, I think, to what we're trying to do. Cause we're doing all earthwork as well. This is just lagoons, um, in a concrete structure, six foot diameter precast concrete structure and some pipe. Um, and then the last one would, was, would you use them again? And, and Lonnie said, yes, I would use them. I'd use them both on my federal and private jobs certainly. He said he is very eager to work and do a good job. So, those are the recommendations from the references. Um, so given that the people are reputable contractors, one being at Ellsworth, the other Ringle, we all have heard that name before. And, um, it's within our budget and, um... we all have heard that name before, and it's within our budget, and the lowest bidder through a bid process, I'm recommending the award of $852,419, based on the following appropriation. So, we'll spend all our grant money first, which is $375,400, and that leaves us with a loan of $477,019. When you compare that to what we're approved for, the loan was $698,000. So, some of that's gonna cover my costs in engineering. So, that'll be all covered within our loan and grant. And also, that leaves us with what I had in the budget for control panel that's gonna control that pump station and the wastewater treatment plant. So, because they talked to each other, we needed to have that control panel. So, that'll come later, but right now, we need to focus on the contractor award. So, before you open it to discussion, I just want to say that it just so happened the state knew that I, I mean, they knew I was bidding, so they kind of got their stuff together, and they've issued a Fonzie, Finding of No Significant Impact, which is the last step in the process of closing our state revolving fund loan. What that means is, is that starting from the date that Terry gets the Custer Chronicle gets in the newspaper, she said...
It'll be next week, the 11th.
Oh, the 11th, I'm sorry. The 11th, 30 days from that day is the 8th of January. So, that period of time, officially, we're not allowed to give the contractor a notice to proceed. We can give a notice of award, and then if there is some preparatory work that could be done, obviously, we're kind of at risk because we haven't closed our loan yet, but we're within our rights to, because of the winter coming and stuff, we can prepare things. But beyond that, really, the official notice to proceed can't come until January 8th, when it's been 30 days. And then we can immediately start using our ARPA funds, which we have in our account, and what the state said is, by that time, you'll have your loan closed. So, everything will come in line.
Okay, good. So, we need a motion to accept the bid from Baroque Advantage? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the bid from Baroque.
Baroque.
Baroque Advantage.
Okay. Donna makes the motion. Do I have a second?
All right, yes, you two award the contract then. I'll second.
Shannon seconded it. So, in discussion, my first question is gonna be Anthony. When we left yesterday from the bid process, you were gonna compare, make sure that everything was equal on his bid as to what you had asked for. Did that all come through correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was all fine.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Go ahead, Shannon.
Do you have any concerns that it's $40,000 less than...
Than my estimate?
Yeah.
Well...
Do you expect some change orders to come through that...
So, no, I don't think there will be, based on everybody bidding on the same thing. Where I think a lot of it comes in is, if you tell the bidders it's $900,000 to $2,000,000, they're playing kind of chess with their competitors, knowing that number in their head. And so, a lot of that will come down to how they calculate the amount they're gonna charge for their equipment, so, and their labor. So, because the majority of this work is labor and equipment, if the contractor really wants the job and is already here and has already got their equipment, and they're, you know, let's say they are slow in the winter, then they can adjust those numbers to be within their, you know, to be within their margins of profit. So, because it's $30,000, that's basically the same thing. I mean, that's an accrual error when you're talking about almost $900,000. It's like 3%.
Any other questions? Comments? Eric?
So, you really didn't get any insight from Prospect into why they bid the way they did?
I did have them ask us to postpone the bid by a week. And I said that, I messaged Cal, but I said that we have really strict deadlines on this project, and we don't want to jeopardize funding. If we don't award the bid by December 31st, we'll lose the ARPA funding, which is $375,000. So, I said, "There's two board meetings, there's the one tonight, and then there's one in two weeks, and then that's it. And there's the holidays afterwards." So, I said, "I don't see the reason, if everybody got a month, and it was all advertised on BidNet, and they were actually early in seeing that, why I would give them extra time." So, I don't know if they then just had to kind of guesstimate some items. And I know that they were wavering between using a liner and using clay, Benonite, because Prospect asked probably two dozen questions by email, written questions, Q and A, up until the deadline of the Q and A. So, I knew what they were thinking, because they kept asking, you know, "Can we use this? Do you expect for that?", you know, so that they could evaluate using that. I think that their expertise is in HDPE synthetic liners. And so, I think they probably used that, and that's easily a couple hundred thousand dollars more if you go with a HDPE liner. It's easier, it's less headache, but you pay for the convenience of laying down a liner.
Anybody else? Questions? Go ahead, Cal.
I don't really have a question. I mean, all we basically know is what's on this paper and what Anthony's told us, and as far as he is concerned, it seems like he has faith that these people, Baroque Advantage, will be able to complete the job on time and on budget. So, I mean, I don't have any specific reason why we shouldn't do it. Anybody has any ideas? You know, please say them now.
Yeah, now's the time, huh? All right, anything further from anybody on the board? The attorney, any questions from the attorney?
No, just listening to the presentation, it seems like all the necessary boxes have been checked when it comes to, not only being a little bid, but a little competent bid, and that is not an issue here, so.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience? In that case, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
All right, so, we're moving in reverse order. So, I have some interesting news. I made a trip to Hill City on the invitation of a new city administrator, and when I was there getting a tour of their water and sewer infrastructure, this was behind their Department of Public Works. And that is a vector truck, which cleans our sewer system and sucks out all that material so that it's not just clogging up our lines. It's from '91, but it still runs. And Justin, their public works director, basically told the city administrator, "If Hermosa wants it, you should just give it to them." So, I asked, "Well, what's the catch? You know, why are you giving us a free truck that drives and everything and runs?" And he said, "Well, the clutch that engages the vector system is always, you know, adjusted out, but there's no more adjustment left, so that's gonna need to be replaced." And so, but he said, "Other than that, the only other thing is that blue hose that you see in the front." So, the way this truck works is, the blue hose is the jetter. So, they run that hose under pressure, and that cleans the line and brings the debris back to where they're working from. And once it's there in the manhole, then they bring this hose that's up top, they bring that over the manhole, and they suck it out. That's a vacuum. And it dewaters it, and it leaves it in the back. And then this back hatch opens up, and it actually, this goes up, the hatch opens, this goes up, and dumps all the material out into a drying pad or landfill or whatever. So, the clutch is out, and he also said that they had to cut some of that hose. Normally, you'll get like 1,000 feet of hose, so that you can do two runs. You can go right past one manhole to the next one and then bring all that back. And usually, two manhole segments is about as far as you want to go if you're doing a heavy cleaning, because you'll have so much material they're trying to bring back, you run out of water all the time. So, they cut that, because they had a rip in it or something, and that was the cheapest option. And so, they only have 600 feet, so it can only do one run at a time, which for me, I don't see is a huge deal. And there is probably some components in here that are worn, because they told me that sometimes they'll be jetting and they'll look back and the thing's all spun out in the road, right? Like it just took off, and the hose is just...
Got to wind it its own, huh?
Yeah, unwound itself, you know? And so, then they gotta wind it all back. So, you know, those are the nature of something. So, what I suggest to do is that I figure out, so, a friend of mine works at a company that sells vectors back in Michigan, right? And so, what I'd like to do is contact them, their name's Kennon Industries, and I'd like to ask them what it would cost or how could we evaluate this to determine what costs are for repairs, at least parts, right? And then, what's the complexity of the repair? Could our DPW handle that repair in the shop or what have you? So, that way, we kind of have a full picture. And obviously, I know the city administrator, he replied back, well, he was four days on the job, so, you know, he's brand new that week. But he replied like, "Well, you know, maybe there's some value to it," right? But that guy was pretty adamant. He was like, "No, you just want to give it to them, trust me, because they're getting a brand new one." So, they're actually getting a trailer unit. It was $175,000. This is a truck unit, so that if it was brand new, it would be almost $350,000.
So, are you asking for more time to get more information, then?
Well, yeah, I'd like to spend a little time to ask them for estimates and try to come up with a cost estimate if we were to get it, and also negotiate with Hill City, so that, you know, I'm sure it's got to go to their board or something, that they agree to part with that. And so, that would be me talking with the DPW and maybe attending a city council meeting and saying, "Hey, this is the situation, this is what you've got, and Hermosa could really use it, and we're prepared to do the necessary thing to repair it and have it operation." So, maybe we could even have an agreement with them that, let's say, theirs breaks down, and, you know, we can help one another in case ours breaks down, and have some sort of mutual assistance agreement with hourly rates. They were open to that, too.
Okay, all right. So, I entertain a motion to give Anthony the... Go ahead, to do what he needs to do to...
Yeah, I'll make a motion for Anthony to look into acquisition of his truck. Negotiate for the, or pursue quotes for repairs.
Whatever needs to be done, basically. Go to meetings at Hill City if need be, okay? All right, and you, Shannon seconded that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Go ahead, Cal.
What's your estimated cost on this investigation? And then, likely, obviously, you're not gonna know what else is gonna be required for the repairs, but with what you know now, and then maybe adding a buffer, what's your estimated cost to get this thing up and running?
Oh, I thought you meant like my time to go figure it out.
Including your time, too.
Okay, so like time to figure it out, I'd say it's probably like eight hours total with travel time and meetings at the council and talking with DPW and talking back to Michigan to find out estimates and stuff, about eight hours, five hourly. And then, and what we could do is, we could do a work authorization off of our on-call budget, as we always do. In terms of repairs of this thing, I know that Justin, the DPW guy, had gotten some estimates. And so, obviously, it's labor and materials, but you're talking about what's probably a clutch inside this, it's almost like a transmission clutch. So, you're probably easily talking, what, $4,000, $5,000, maybe less, but in that ballpark, for just that part. It's specialized, so, you know, it's not tens of thousands of dollars, but it's not a hundred bucks.
And how much was the last jetting that we paid for for the town?
Eight grand.
Eight grand. So, if this costs $4,000, it's paid for in one time?
Yep.
And this is something that we have done every three years?
Yeah, actually, there was a lot of that that was cameraing, but the actual jetting, the total package I think was around $30,000.
Kind of a no-brainer, then, isn't it?
Pretty much.
All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
I just think it should be noted that it's awfully nice Hill City to think of us.
Oh, incredibly nice.
It's wonderful to have towns working together, and I'm all in favor for, down the road, to get this agreement, you know, to help each other out.
Mutual assistance, yeah.
Like we do with hot springs and the mosquito spray, or we used to, or whatnot. I just think that's really, really great, should be noted, so thankful to them.
We'll have to get a...
Something.
Thank you card and something for the city if this goes through.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Even if it falls through, it was really nice.
Well, nice, yeah.
Yeah. So, always nice to work together.
Good.
Yeah, they've all new people there, so, you know, it's a lot of the younger business people, business owners or council members, and they kind of have their head on, you know, in terms of getting the town where it needs to be, so.
They've got some work cut out with it for them. I mean, with the Prairie Berry closing down that...
I didn't know that.
They don't know they asked you, Chris.
Yeah, I heard it, I think. What was it?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I did hear it, but I can't remember. I did get a posting today that so far, they have not sold it. They thought they had it sold once. That fell through. They're still looking. They have absolutely no intent on keeping it open, so it needs to sell. And so, if you're looking for any Red Astor Bard or Three Rednecks or Lawrence Elk, you better buy it now.
I've been there.
Well, South Dakota is one of few states that doesn't allow the importation of wine from other states, such as California. So, when I told Pelzer Winery on my trip to California last week that Prairie Berry's for sale, they said, "We want to buy it."
Oh, well, you give them the number?
I don't know how much it is.
That would be cool. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried. Thank you, Anthony.
All right, so, A, so that one is in your packet. There's some color photos in there. I made a field trip to New Underwood and took pictures and measurements of their WRT. So, that helped me to get an idea of the complexity of the building and how big it needs to be, et cetera. So, that allowed me to write this proposal. So, 6A is a proposal to assist the town in the design, planning, and construction of the new well, WRT, upgrades to the booster station, pipework modifications to allow for two pressure zones in the water system, and repair of the large water storage tank, all with submissions to DAR. Conduct bid phase for contractor selection, provide construction management services, including inspection services, coordinate testing for materials quality, smoothing the cost of labor, I'm sorry, lab and field testing, which probably only two. And that is in the amount of $250,000. That's in our engineer's budget, our engineer's estimate. This is basically the engineering services required for our drinking water loan. So, that drinking water loan is already approved, the scope's approved. We kind of picked apart what the scope would be when we were doing the north water tank, so what was left is going into this. The color photo, fortunately, I don't think you had one, but you probably remember this from previous meetings, and you can pass it around, but basically, the blue is good pressure, and then the orange and red are substandard pressures. So, this... And so this project rectifies all these issues. The reason there's no increase into the height of the tank that initially thought, the 314,000 gallon tank on the top of the hill, is because in our model it showed that we would really need, that it has gone past the line of a ground storage tank being the appropriate solution, to a tower. And so that would increase the cost, you know, quite a bit, to put a, a tower up instead of a tank. So, instead of that, the booster station's already sized, so I ran a scenario in our model where we run the booster station with, with controls and, and actuated valves. And that booster station can actually boost the pressure in either the low zone or the high zone. So it can actually serve either zone, wherever it's called. So as soon as the pressure drops, it'll go to that zone and it'll boost the pressure. Which is the, the purpose of a booster station is to boost pressure, that's it. It's not really supposed to, uh, provide flow or do anything other than make, it's rung by two pressure transducers, in and out. And when those are not where they're supposed to be, then in the settings, then it kicks on. So the difference is, is that I'm taking something we are going to spend X amount of dollars on, and I'm utilizing it instead of raising the tank. Because now with the, the new tower on the west side, we, we have plenty of storage. We have over half a million gallons of storage at any one time.
So that booster would be automatic, it will just do it as needed?
Yep, it's all under...
It won't take Chuck to go?
Nope.
Will it make all of those green?
Yep.
Yeah, all blue, right?
Blue, yeah, blue.
I, I don't have, well, that could be my own issues though. Water pressure sucks, I've got a...
In the orange.
Yeah, and I'm just in the blue.
Okay.
So blue's like 45, so it's, you might be right on the cusp, but even the ones in the blue will get better. Because I can't really, I'm not going to reduce pressure.
I said make them all green.
Yeah, it'll get into the next color up, yeah. And the reason is because as long as you're under 120 PSI, I'm not worried about fixtures and faucets and stuff in the houses. They're all designed for at least that pressure. So, once we get it above 100, then I start to wonder if maybe I need a pressure reducer valve, you know, to reduce some, to cut down some pressure. But it's usually something you do only when absolutely necessary, like if you've got a lot of topography, you know? So, um, we're not, we're not in that.
We'll come later if we need it.
We can always add one, but that, I don't think we're going to need it. Yeah, I think we're going to be fine.
It's too much.
Well, it's too much.
250, it's too much.
Oh, well, the loan is 2.1 million, so...
If it's only, you know, 2% or...
That doesn't mean it has to, you know, even out there.
No, no, that's not how it calculated.
Between the last 40,000 and, you know, you can make this one 40,000, that's only a percent. I could do a lot with that 80, 80 grand total. We could fit it somewhere.
We, we'd use it somewhere, yeah, I don't know about that. Any questions from the board?
I think it's well-written and specific what it's for. I think you've put a lot of thought and work into it. We plan on moving forward with this project, right?
Pardon me?
I said we all plan on moving forward with this project.
Yes, exactly, so...
And the time sensitivity part is the well, because we need to be able to prepare, um, for the driller to be in his spring schedule. DA and R has already approved us to do this in two phases, the construction side. So they'll allow us to hire the well driller, drill the well and test it for radonucleids, and then go out to bid on the phase two, which is everything else. So that'll, that'll actually inform the design of the WRT, so we're not paying for anything more than we have to. And then it also will determine if we need to put in that dedicated line, which was worth 100-plus thousand dollars, um, right now or not.
So that surveying for the topography and, and state, that will tell us also if you needed a reducer in there?
Uh, I already know.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I did, I did point elevations in the, when I did the tank design.
So you're saying you really don't want us to sit on this too long?
Well, I, I'm afraid that we don't get in the well driller's schedule. I see he's sitting, uh, our preferred driller is sitting at Butler Cat, and I'm sure, I haven't talked to him, but I'm sure he's really upset, because he was supposed to be out of there two weeks ago.
That was kind of a joke.
Whoever Butler Cat hired as their engineer, I won't say their name, keeps vacillating on if that's enough water or not, so... They need to come down to what it is. Let him out of there or make him drill more.
I would entertain a motion to approve the engineer's contract.
I make a motion, we approve the engineer's contract.
Donna makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
There is a second, so thank you both. Any further questions or comments? Cal?
So on your original, um, loan cost estimate that we got, it was at 2.2 and now it's at 2.4, what was the reason why it went up by 200?
The cost estimate's 2.4, or is that just contingencies?
No, that, that, the sheet that you sent out, the original one was 2.2 and then the updated one's 2.4.
It's 2.2.
Yeah.
What's, what's 2.4 now?
That's what you just said.
Oh, no, no, so I'm sorry, I misspoke. So I think it's, it's 2.2 or that's the loan, or less, right? So, we actually have 2.3 something, but that's my cost estimate. So maybe that's what you're, yeah, that's where that's coming from. So the SRF loan is actually approved for like 2.3 whatever, right? But that's like the maximum, that's how they create the, the bond. So they always go higher with the creation of the bond, because they don't know what the bid's going to come in at. And it takes like 30 to 60 days to put a bond together sometimes. So if they, it's like a loan. So if they had to do that, they completely mess up the whole, uh, bidding scenario. So they always go like 15% higher. But you only pay for what you get, so if the bid comes in at 2 million or 1.8 or whatever, that's all the loan is, if it's not anymore.
And this 250 is all-inclusive for all of your services, for the, uh, the well, the WRT? Uh, I guess the water tank is being covered by the ARPA grant, right? Or the, uh, the grant we got from...
Yeah, the county. County, yeah.
Alright.
Alright, any other board members' questions? Kent, you all right with the contract?
No, um, I've not seen this contract before. But in hitting the high points and trying to get as much of that I could of, in this presentation, the prior concerns are fairly written. And, um, choice of law, uh, our governing law, and those kind of things, the indemnifications are mutual. So it seems to be a fair contract at first blush.
Okay, alright. Dan, did you have a question?
Yeah, um, Ben, thanks, Cal, for your answer on that, because that was one of my two, because when I heard the 2.4, I, uh, whoa, where are we going here? So I appreciated that. And reading the contract too, I thought, look, Fred, the only thing is now the ARPA money that we got won't be for the WRT, it's going to the tower then?
Correct.
Is it, that's correct?
Yep.
So then we're going to now be using the 2.2 for the WRT system?
Yeah, that's, well, the WRT system, booster station, repairs to the large storage tank that we have, changes in the pipe configuration, so that we break the system up into two pressure zones.
And what's the total that we're going to be using then of that 2.2 when we're done with all of this?
So, without me, oh, and drilling the well, sorry, which was a big question. So without me getting the results of the, the water testing?
Right.
I had to take the worst-case scenario, so we've taken, uh, a lot of the data from New Underwood, which, which we feel is overly conservative, it's going to be, because they have two systems?
Correct.
Side by side, so they actually could run, and right now they run in series, but they could run in parallel. So that would double their capacity, so they, that's how they approached it. So that'll all be part of the design process to not get more than we need, correct? You know, our Injakara formation, the radonucleids come in and out. And what we're hoping is, is our new well will be similar to our current well, and it'll have, it'll be under the limit.
Correct. So we're still going to be at the 500,000 for the single unit up there to do what we do?
Less, it's in the...
Same housing?
Yeah, a little less, it's in the cost estimate.
And use our pump house as what we originally had designed?
Yep, yep.
So it'll still be good. And then for the tower, well, booster, and what are we using on fundings there for that amount?
It's in this. So all we're doing is that on-ground housing.
2.2, what I'm asking is what total payout of the 2.2? Are we using 1.5, are we using all the 2.2?
Um, so, I don't have that cost estimate in front of me, I don't know if somebody's got it printed out, but, um, you know, like the well itself was, I think, half a million with the pumps and everything. And then you have the repaired, so I had an, an estimate for adding rings to the tank, so that actually is gone. So that'll bring it down. So now we're probably at 2.1. And then we get to, um, the booster station, we're using the, the, the house on the ground though.
Right.
But we're putting in 750 GPM pumps, pretty good-sized pumps, so we're going to have 30 GPM pumps in there.
That cavity then, which means existing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we won't need to put a new strip. And then our, uh, our current building, I've estimated that I won't, that it won't be a big enough size, so I've got an estimate in there for a new building there. So, but if we're able, based on the water testing, if we're able to fit those filters in our current treatments, uh, building?
Correct.
Then all that price goes away, and that's a, um, I had a, I had a size in here. And you'd be, you'd probably build a 22 feet by 24 feet building that's 14-foot high, insulated.
And that's over what's...
Maybe like 600 foot deep, but it's tall.
And then cost on matters.
Um, so you're probably talking 120, maybe? So we could have a cost savings there, with the doors and insulation siding, it was a metal-sided building.
Piping and stuff, then you'll have 100,000 in that, you figured?
I don't know, I don't have all these...
Here we take, so...
Geez, I don't know. Because that's all digging up in this hill, but separating, it was like, for example, Folsom Court, which is at the end there?
Yep.
That is one part of this side of the town that's on the high-pressure zone.
Right.
The way it's designed, so I've got to be able to route the pipe work to that, to connect to that water main. And then I gotta come down to Main Street, and there I put in a PRZ in Main Street, and then that way I can feed the whole west side of town with its own zone.
So you're doing the tower?
All that's included.
And Preston's then too, and that was what, half a million there?
That's half a million on its own, yeah, that's its own. That's a grant.
So we're, with the booster in that, going to be a million and three-quarter, roughly?
That'd be nice, if we could get there, yeah.
Because, why, I'm saying, did you, have you calculated user fees then, that we're going to have?
Scenarios that we can run in the...
Because we were at it, we used the full 2.2. We knew each homeowner would be another $55 a month?
Yeah, we heard that.
Water on top of what we are paying now. The sewer, we will be the same, another 50 bucks a month, with what we were doing with that on top of what we're paying. So we have $100 more per user, plus what we're already paying.
Well, not, yeah, we, we readjusted the rates so that we lowered some part of their bill, because there's two parts to the bill. They're in either water or sewer. There's your surcharge, which we're forced to charge a certain amount. And the sewer, I think, was $34, it's in, it's in one of my documents here. But then, what we did is to compensate for it, the rest of the bill is your, um, operating maintenance costs. So your, that's your user rates and everything, so that we reduced. So, instead of chart, so that way the surcharge is clearly shown, and that was what was needed to close the bottom. So they see that, that we're, we're carrying 110% of that bill.
Correct.
And so the same will apply with the water, when we, now that we have that rate software, we'll look at the current rate and then we'll figure out our surcharge that's a required amount, and then we'll reduce as we can to not go bankrupt, right? What the operating maintenance costs are.
Right, keeps our debt limit down too with the surcharge.
So you get about a 20% reduction when we do that, so that we can accommodate the surcharge, which events, which does boost, just doesn't boost as much.
You're still going to have it. And I think that's the big thing that everybody needs to be aware of, is that we're on down on a line, that $100 is the reality. I mean, by the time we get the loan for the treatment, where we're at on the Lagoon, where we're at for all of the 2.2, um, whatever we use on that, then we're going to be roughly in that number. The surcharge will keep our debt limit down, so we need more.
Right.
We can go in for loan grant or anything else. And that was kind of why, in the process before, I always said, you know, yeah, we had the 2.2, we were going to release that back and try to go back in for these projects and get more grant than loan to try to help us out on that circumstance, so...
But if you had a 1.0, let's say, let's say it's 1.5, okay? That ends up being after some good engineering, right? And so the 1.5 million at 1.625 interest rate from a 2022 loan versus if we were to go back to the SRF program now, when it's over 4? You're gonna, you're gonna get half the money.
Unless we got 30% grant.
If.
And sometimes more.
If we have...
Depending on your projects, correct?
But everything there is, is dependent on what the, that's competitive. So then you're going to score high and all those kinds of things. So there's no guarantee on, on grant lines. And I wouldn't recommend we keep going back to this. I'd like to diversify the source of the funding that our town goes after.
Well, and USDA, that's why we needed to go to them, and that's where we're going to add.
Yeah, they're very, they're very appropriate for this town, the whole development, yeah.
Correct.
And it's federal, so the only difference is they give you a 40-year loan.
Correct.
Now, they're, that had a major impact on the bill.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, they only require an additional, like, they, they want to look at environmental, so it's only if you are concerned, like, you know, you got floodplain or wetlands or something, then you gotta watching out that you're going to spend a mon, a certain amount of money. But that's upfront cost, so...
No, and I, don't get me wrong, these are all projects that were pet projects of ours that have been a must all the way through. But I think the public needs to be aware of what we're going to be coming, that there is a cost to this of our quality of life, and which this is going to give us a better quality of life. We just know who's we can afford and be prepared for that actual infrastructure cost.
I think that the, um, looking into the future, the way the board is looking at the growth in Hermosa, I think that we will be able to, um, lower that cost in the future because of the growth. And we maybe won't even, I mean, this project isn't going to be started for a year or two, whatever, you know, get completed. So, by the time that happens, we might already have enough growth that it won't be raised as much as that $100 like we had discussed years ago, so...
Well, and so just the numbers on the sewer, um, when we're assuming it's a 1.15 total cost, which it isn't, right? Then we're at a $12.80 project surcharge. So, and then the total, it says the wastewater rates at the time of the application were $34. So then it goes to roughly 4680, 4680, 47. So, um, water is different, because water has a different user base and all that.
Cal?
Yeah, but I also wanted to bring up the point too, that all of these... Um, yeah, but I also wanted to bring up the point too that all of these, uh, this modeling was done with a static population, correct?
Correct.
And so like Linda was saying, um, as we get more growth, the uh, the increased user base will be able to be able to, you know. Take care of the surcharge with giving us the ability to reduce the surcharge per household because there will be more households paying for it. That's what I'm trying to say.
And what we do to buy the town that time is what I was explaining in the waterware software. So we reduce the bill and we put the surcharge in. So that. We're already at this level, our cash position, right? So if it is going down, it's only going down because of inflation, right? So and we factored inflation in our model. So by the population growth being more than the zero, right? And in our model saying like three to three and a half percent inflation, you would hope that your growth would be over three and a half percent. And then that wouldn't happen. And you would have everything that's a surplus would then prevent us delay us from having to increase rates.
So that's worst case scenario.
Yes.
Modeled it.
Yep.
And I think too, as the developments come in, this is what we have talked about for Preston and to help offset some of that protect the citizens. Was we were going to go to a higher sewer charge, higher water charge for the newer developments that would help. And keeping the base of the older population and areas down on that cost too. And I think we all need to keep that in mind, just like Cal said. That with growth and stuff, that we can apply that to new developments. So if they come to ask for annotation, which we have the Preston Development already annexed. That was supposed and that is in the contract that instead of 1,000 water, 1,000 sewer, it was 2,000 on each of them for taps. And then we were going to exercise a higher user fee also out there for that development for the usages where we're at. So.
Yeah, that's a immediate benefit of the of a new user is the the tap and benefit fee. So if you pay that to join the system, that adds up quite a bit when you have a building.
Question.
Go ahead.
Um, so at what point are we looking at when we are implementing these fees and how we're going to implement them? And what we're gonna charge on those surfees? And is that like a whole different meeting than this agreement?
Yes.
And how far down? I mean, we'll have it.
So on the agenda already is discussion of work sessions and the order in which what's most important to go through.
Right.
And that is gonna be one. It will also be um, when we looked at it at one point, there was no raise, I think, for. Or was it a small raise right now? And then a small raise each each year or each two years, we we had an automatic increase.
Turn away to notify our citizens well in advance that this is gonna be happening. So but that's completely separate from this agreement.
Yeah. So in terms of answering your question, the timetable, when we had that discussion. So we would want to be able to get the well driller selected and get the well drilled in, let's say, late spring, early summer. Um, so that way we can test that, test those samples, which then will give me an ability to revise my cost estimate. So that two point two will then get revised. Now we'll have a number that we can plug into our software using our interest rate, the 1.625 I think it is, and the term, I think it's 30 year. And then we'll be able to say, okay, this number, obviously, as long as your bids come in, right? This number um, would would induce this required surcharge. And then it was a pretty intense way to do it when we had to do it with the the bond council because. He needed to see that clearly. But then we you you didn't need to maintain the other for us to stay afloat. So we were able to reduce and extend out several years, the rate increases. And to the point where they're basically the cost of inflation, which is what we're paying labor, materials and everything for anyways. And this is a level of service. So we're not making a profit, but we have to recoup our costs.
So reviewing the costs, you think will be in spring, 25?
I would say July. Yeah.
Twenty five. And one other question about these services not included. Do you have any estimate of what those will be, all these permits and?
Yeah.
And number two being state and local sales tax with the town being.
Yeah, you don't have that.
Yeah.
You don't have sales tax.
I just wanted to make sure. Cause that was number two, state and local sales tax.
Yeah. So the the only thing is materials testing and lab testing, but that's done in the contract. The contractor's contract. So I just make sure the right testing is done at the right time. And he calls it and he pays for that testing. So that's why it's not included in mine.
The design of offsite improvement and the irrigation and landscape design?
Yeah, that's just a standard. We there's no irrigation system going on here. Although Greg Nugavar and I have talked about some irrigation systems that he'd like to implement, but that's a whole different.
Yeah.
Animal with D A and R. So.
Yep. Anything further, Shannon?
I know. I'm just curious of an estimate of what we might be looking at with all those. But it won't be significant, I guess, is.
Yeah, our our overall project cost is gonna go only down from where it's at now. And we have a loan that's capped anyways. So.
So then you just don't get paid if it goes.
It's up to you guys.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you.
So motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Motion carried. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. That was a good question.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
We'll be seeing you again.
Thank you.
That brings us to planning and zoning.
Okay, I have seven A, which is just to approve uh, to approve an address for Marie Street at the end of Hermosa Hills there. That was one. Plat at one time in it. Last year, we made the motion to approve eight 50 Marie Street for the whole plat. Now it's been divided into two plats. So the next plat to the west, I want it to be eight 60 Marie. I just need a motion to approve eight 60 Marie for parcel 015920.
Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Shannon makes a motion? Two seconds? Donna, thank you. All those in favor?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Could you send that to the customer?
So they can get it into Beacon?
I don't want to embarrass anyone, but uh, I have a sister address. I'm 122nd Street and we have a 120 North Second Street. So just to make sure we don't have any same numbers on opposite streets. Anyway, it's caused issues and I've tried to get this fixed even when I worked here. For them to either switch one. Or get one filed because my packages keep getting delivered to 120 North Second Street because mine doesn't pop up even though I've been there longer. I think at one time mine got changed from three, 123 Manning or something. I'm not sure because of the door being on the other side. Anyway, so packages get delivered there and it was okay when I had an agreement with the person that lived there. And I was not aware that the ownership of that house changed. So when I went and get my package, you know, here comes sheriff knocking on the door about stealing somebody's package off the porch. Cause. You know, I hadn't met him yet. I didn't know there's new people to, you know, get that agreement in place that we get each other's packages.
Maybe we can talk to Troy in Custer and see if we can get that ironed out.
Yeah, we can do that. I was just curious who you talked to when you do the address changes. Troy from Custer County?
From Custer County.
Perfect. Thank you.
Very good. That'd be nice to have that cleared up too.
It really would. It'll be the sheriff knocking on the door.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion's carried. Thank you.
I have seven B, which is a carport um, at 780 Marie Street. That carport is already there. Um, I did contact the gentleman. He came in to write a residential building permit application and he gave me all the information about the carport. Um, so it's basically just an FYI and um, it's already there. And I will assess the building fee calculations to him in an invoice.
Thank you for that, Jill. I appreciate that.
And we added on um, seven C, which is just an FYI for um, Reezy Simpson to put up a temporary sign to advertise for the freight and everything that's on that.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
That brings us to claims. I make a motion. We accept the claims as stated. Motion's been made. Do I have a second? All seconded so that we can go into discussion if there is any. Questions, comments? It's a lot of money. That's my comment. However, it's uh, there's two very big items that are necessary. So.
Half a million.
It uh. Starts or finishes the cleanup on the TIF, the old TIF. And it's the payment for the wastewater treatment system, which is now down in the. Down at the legal. So.
And that'll get worked into loans and project costs, no? Are we accounting um, somehow keeping Anthony's, all of those separate for different projects?
Yep. There's a bunch of them.
Yeah.
We're moving good here.
Look here, does that come out of general? Will we bid, you know, for engineer for the year? Not really, cause it's included in projects.
Projects.
So it's confusing.
I don't know. Lot of separation. Any, yes, Cal.
I did want to ask Kent about his bill on here. So it states it's first to December 2024 retainer fee.
At 2,500, I noticed, yes.
Okay. And then the uh, and then the the five hours billable was then for uh, November then?
Yes. I don't have it from the, yeah, that would be a fair.
Oh, okay. All right.
Did you want to see that? Terry will show it to you if you'd like to see it.
Oh, if she has it right there.
Yep, she does.
Anyone else want to see it?
I look at it already. And Terry, this is um, nothing new to add here. Change. Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Oh, sorry. So sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cal?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. That brings us to law enforcement. Uh, the Custer County law, they did send one this month. Uh, the total numbers are 43. Um, it goes from November 1st is the first one, November 30th is the last one. I did a little research or breakdown and research on this. Um, 12 out of that 43 was extra school patrol. Six were paper service. Two were ambulance calls. Four were extra patrols. And. Two were uh, yeah, I can't even remember my handwriting here. Let's see here.
Six with documents.
Pardon me?
Service, document service?
Serv- yeah, paper service. Yeah, that was six. And that's something that they, you know, that's a continuous thing. That's has basically other than.
Down and, you know, school patrols was too long and then I forgot what you said.
Sorry.
Twelve, six and two.
Twelve, six, two, four and two. What was the other one? Two.
What was two, four and two?
Uh, two is ambulance calls. Four is extra patrol. And two is burn permit. Yep.
Honda, I noticed, I seen Chuck down at the general store who's fixing the stop sign. But I was just wondering, has there ever been a report that someone has drove into that stop sign that the town has to replace because it was mangled? There had to have been two accidents there now. Maybe I went down to the Rockin' Room a while back and they had a tow truck putting a little car on. And the sign was twisted a little bit on the side. And then, hey, wait, I went down to the store this weekend and it was totally twisted along the ground. So I'm just wondering if there's a report or something. So I don't think the town should have to pay for the stop sign. I mean, whoever ran into it or whatever, their insurance or something would be.
Well, that's worth checking into. Thank you.
Yeah.
Chuck?
There's actually two, three eyewitnesses on the accident itself. So there's roughly 375 to 400 dollars worth of damage here. That was going to come up on the street. I think probably we need to contact the person that ran over. If he'd like to reimburse the town for the cost, if not, then I guess it has to be turned over to Sheriff's Department. It's enough money that they should have just.
So there was never a law enforcement called on that particular?
Not to my knowledge. Uh, it happened on Thursday, I believe. And um. There was witnesses that seen the actual record, come and pick the car up and.
Okay.
Someone that lived in the neighborhood also. It was a little war. So um, I think probably, you know, because. If you get the law involved, first thing that's gonna happen, they're gonna say, well, you know, can you get license numbers and can you identify the person or the driver?
Right.
You know, I I think probably give him the opportunity to pay for the damages. And if he refuses, then it's a matter of turning it over to the law.
Okay. Could I get you to work with Jill on that? Give him names, numbers, whoever was involved, please. You and Jill and Terry? Thank you. Deb, anything else?
No, I just, I'm I'm thinking it was hit twice. But, cause first time it wasn't unless you could, you know, cause it was still standing when the tow truck had put the vehicle up. When I was there this weekend, it was totally twisted and on the ground.
Well, it was caught up underneath and they had a pile of tussles getting loose. So and I mean, the sign itself was just totally destroyed. Most of it bent. Molly moles were broke and the sign itself was ripped.
Can't imagine what it did to that car.
Well, they hit that.
It's down by.
The law was there too. They may. Where it was positioned, they hit the law before they hit the sign because that was the idea of the law. Kind of deter them a little bit. But they they mounted that also.
Wow. Okay. Any other questions or comments on the on the sheriff's laws?
The South Heartland Express miscellaneous, 911. I suppose that was.
Yes, that Heartland Express still.
I heard a trucker hit a whole bird of elk.
Yes. Yes. It was awful, it was terrible awful. Yes.
And all but one?
Well, there was two that were given. And the rest supposedly were mangled bad enough that they weren't worth any work to save the meat. Lana and I went down, I can't even remember what time it was, nine o'clock in the morning, I think, maybe. And the highway patrolman was sitting there and wandled him and, and visited with him a bit. The accident happened at about one-thirty in the morning. And there's fourteen elk were hit. Not all of the elk were hit, some got away. But there were two bulls, four calves, and the rest does. And two of them were good enough that they got picked up, by whom I don't know. He did not give us that information. But he told us we could look at it and so we rolled some of them around and looked at them to see if there was any savable meat on them, because that is a horrible waste. I mean, what, I, 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 I can't even say, you know, horrible waste, but, but by the time we were there, they were starting to stiffen up and there really was, and two guys showed up after we were there looking to see if there was anything worth saving also, so. Sad, sad, I mean, that, can you imagine what happened to that truck?
Can you imagine what that guy felt?
Oh, man, I can't. Can you imagine hitting the drive, semi? Yes.
Yeah, I was from Texas, I think.
Yep. About a mile south of town here.
I mean, the whole family of elk was migrating, moving, not just wandering, that's awful.
That is.
But the driver lived.
The driver did live, mm-hmm. Yep, it didn't even sound like he was horribly hurt. I, I would guess that he was probably a lot sore the next day when all the bruises and
More shocked.
You know, come out, but yeah, sad, sad situation there.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks for sharing that.
Yes. All right.
I have something on law enforcement.
Okay.
Trucking always visiting about the marsh of car down, sitting down on the.
Yeah, it's been there a long time.
Yeah, I think we should put it in, in storage so it doesn't deteriorate anywhere.
For the winter?
Yeah.
What does the rest of the board think of that?
Too much storage.
Look, we usually park it down, down at the comp houses.
Do we have a carport or?
It sits in the, in the garage, yeah.
Is the dirt and stuff still down there? You got rid of all that?
I think, I haven't been in there in a long, long time, so I don't know what is in there anymore.
Well.
That just kind of brought up the whole sore.
It'll be parked on the east side of the building. The other vehicle is in the shop now, so. The miles per day and battery charging and whatever.
Yep.
You know, so it is usable.
That's something else we'd have to think about if we get this pump truck.
At one point, we were putting this on a tire box.
Right.
Auction.
And that is all things we need to reconsider, look at, and put that on a work session also, probably. Discussion of law enforcement vehicles.
I have no problem with.
And law enforcement.
And the storage.
Everybody all right? And Chuck, do you usually do the moving of it? The vehicle?
No, I'm sure the batteries are dead and stuff.
We'll get that.
We can move it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else for law enforcement? Very good, thank you. That brings us to legal.
Yes. Seven eight is, Ms. Callan asked me to review a memorandum of understanding between FEMA and the town. And it's a, it is a little perplexing. The response that I wrote after, after initial review of it was sent back to Cal, is in a review of the subject document, my first question, is this a desire reflection of the town's potential slash future relationship with FEMA? It is complete with words and phrases which profess co-op, quote, cooperation, unquote, and like-mindedness with the Biden administration policies. Given that the new administration likely not requires such a document, and if it is not essential to immediate needs of Hermosa, I would recommend holding off on signing any such policy statement at this time. Although the MOU professes to be a non-binding agreement that is not legally enforceable, the purpose of an MOU is to espouse a unity of thought and intent upon which each party can rely in moving forward with a binding agreement slash course of action. To some extent, I will defer to the city engineer and town board's desire to engage in such a document. We've asked that a full discussion of the same be conducted at a board meeting, at the, at the board level in an open meeting or executive session as the board needs most appropriate. So you know, I, I look at things from a legal analysis and there's some things that trouble me in here and it's a, it's, it's, in my opinion, not even a competent document. Because it's, goes over board and saying it's not legally binding, it doesn't mean squat and we're, I'm okay, you're okay type of situation. But otherwise, also says things like this agreement in no way guarantees that there will be a separate agreement for financial assistance or reimbursement of any kind. Yeah, okay, well, that's a lot of gobbledygook in there. It, it might impression, maybe it's my paranoia, but my impression is that when you ask for essentially a policy statement from a municipality or any other government jurisdiction, when you're in, in, in a FEMA little town, FEMA any size town type of relationship, tension, they want you to go on record stating your, your, let's say, your mutual oneness of thought with them. It talks about DEI, it talks about global warming, it talks about other things that are, are pet terms or pet projects or whatever you want to call it of the current administration. Now, and I'm not saying it's bad mouth because I'm not of that persuasion. It's legally, doesn't make a hell of a lot of sense, so. And then I see no articulation in here or, or in Cal, discussing with him. There, there's no rational relationship between executing this agreement and having it be a prerequisite to obtain funds, grants, anything like that, that I'm aware of. Is that fair?
That's what it seems to say.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm saying why?
Why?
And secondly, I guess, yeah, invite everybody to, to read it and, and if you're comfortable with it, you're the board. My recommendation is to hold off on it and see if the new, if FEMA requires it under the next administration. I guess it probably won't when it comes to light. It, it appears to be something that the federal government wants to make sure you have all the ores in the water pulling in the same direction as they are on social policy issues. That's what I, sounds like to me. And is that someplace we want to go? Is that someplace we want to be in the business of? I really don't quite get it.
I'm gonna let Joan come up, or can you come up here, Joan, so that we, your, your voice is sometimes very, very light, so.
Number one, I don't think that you have the full story.
Right.
I don't think you have the full story.
No, I don't.
This is a memorandum of understanding regarding a grant that we put in for and receive, which is only IT technology service for three years. There's no money exchanged, it's, it's them helping us. Hermosa had a, hosted a two-day event last month with, which included FEMA, South Credit Emergency Management, Headquarter's Academy out of Montana, along with Elmer Claiborne, our Floodcliff Administrator, Anthony, board members. And what we did is we, first day was all lessons, questions, discussion. Very good discussions. The second day was a visit through the town, all locations of past, present, and future projects that we are working on, are hoping to work on. Now, what, one of the IT things they can do for us is write the grants, even FEMA grants, because they're a whole separate portion of FEMA. However, this memorandum of understanding, I'm quite sure is a standard that they, you know, just fill in the blanks with the things we discussed. So in those two days, some of the things we came up with that we want to work on in the next three years are some of the goals, I would say. Number one, support the award and implementation of Hermosa's brick grant, twenty twenty-three, which is a grant that we, is money. It's a separate grant. They will support us in any request for information, any other, any other grant administration. Many ways, they can help us with that. And we probably should know within a couple of months, we should, as far as the timeline on that grant and the projects, when the money comes in, things like that, so, but that one is a separate grant and it is money, this is not.
Do you have another copy of this, John?
No, I don't, but I'm sure.
I'd be hopeful to have. Thank you.
One of our main, one of our first goals, which was high priority, is to have them write a grant for generators, which, what do we need, like ten?
We need several, yeah.
It's a, it's a huge undertaking. Their suggestion, of course, is not to put all your eggs in one basket. Put it along with another grant. If you don't get them on, you can move on to another grant. That's a very high priority one. Another priority one was goal three, they will help us rewrite our ordinances and our comp plan, however. Everything they do is subject, it comes to us first. We make any changes we want. We don't just let them send it off to someone else.
Sure.
So they aren't taking control in any way, they're only assisting us. The fourth goal, the red, and each of these goals has a whole list underneath of things that pertain to it and ways we can achieve those goals. The fourth goal was to enhance community awareness on flood risk and identify mitigation solutions for Ferguson subdivision and other drainage issues. Also develop and implement an outreach strategy for our citizens, so we have more input from them. Our fifth goal was to support the development of internal processes. Part of this is the new GIS system they're using and training for that system. They can help with all of that. So even though it sounds strangely agreeable, these are all things that we all discussed in long, at the meetings. There was a large number of them. And the other thing would be that this is just a memorandum of understanding and we don't, we, this is what we set those goals at now. However, at any time, we can change those goals. We can have new priorities and they're okay with that. And either party can disengage at any time, so it's not binding in that respect either.
That, that helps. I don't disagree that obviously grants and money are, are really super helpful in the law enforcement to obtain those goals. That's not even my question, my question is, why do they need the MOU? They tell you that?
Yes, it's, so they know in which ways they can help us. Same, same reason they have the strategy that, that we came up with.
Do you need this fact?
As long as it's, um.
We signed the, I know, we signed this memorandum of understanding also on other projects that we've done here in Hermosa. So it's not something new to us.
Okay, well, I guess, and this is a good conversation to have, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that an MOU, as, as they, like I say, they go out of the way to say it's not legally binding document and
It's not legally binding.
No decisions on grants or otherwise will be made based on that. However, you kind of articulated your understanding of it, also that they want to know that, what the scope of our intent is and, and that.
What we're gonna be asking of them. You know?
Which, which would be saying to your goals.
Yes, and everything we ask of them has to relate back to emergency.
And, and that's terrific, I think that just is a good way to proceed with any intergovernmental or, or two people. It, because it gives a little clarity to the future relationship. And if they know, if they understand your goals, all the better, that's a good thing. And it should be required almost to know that, okay, if we're gonna team up on this particular program, we have to know that your goals are X, Y, and Z, and that's consistent with what our edict says for that bucket of money. However, that might be, right? And that could all be done, I think, without this MOU.
Well, it's government and it's FEMA and they won't move ahead until the MOU is signed.
So it is binding, so it is obligatory?
It is obligatory to get their help, but the goals can change.
I'm just saying, when you enter this as board, you're making a policy statement, some of which you may or may not agree with. That's all I'm saying. So carefully read it. Is there a deadline on it anywhere?
Uh, no. After it's signed. It doesn't take effective until it is signed. So we have no help until it is signed.
Okay.
And, I mean, you know, we were hoping to have it ready to go by the New Year, so we have another meeting yet. For anybody that wants to take more time and look through it. However, like I said, it is free help, it costs us nothing. And it is labor, it isn't money coming to us, that needs to be remembered by everybody.
Erin, you had a question?
I think you kind of just hit the nail on the head, they're, they're doing stuff for us. They need to have evidence that they did stuff for us. Like this is just clerical, keeping, oh, this is what we're working on right now.
Exactly.
Higher ups, hi supervisor, we're working with Hermosa, so here you go, it's on paper.
Yes, that's exactly it. Exactly.
There's no gotcha here, FEMA's not gonna, they're not looking for a gotcha, this is just.
And they will be out again. And the next time they're out, it will be for more of a community meeting versus just about the town itself. And they'll try to include other stakeholders, other businesses, other organizations within the town.
There's, again, it's, again, it's a good conversation to have because there may not be any gotchas until it gets there. Here's what I mean by that. An MOU by its very nature is, is an understanding by which two parties proceed in any relationship. And if we do something, and again, I don't even know, really at this point, it could be a number of things. That after attesting to your position and your policy, make sure it's consistent with their policies. If they find that you're not, if you do anything that's inconsistent with their policies, then they can rely on this, about, wait a minute, we gave you that grant because you said you would conduct yourselves in such a way. I encourage everybody to, to read it thoroughly, see what you think, if nothing in there jumps out at you. I'd look at things where you, you subscribe to their current policy positions is what is in here, okay? That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. And my guess is that most folks don't subscribe to all their policy positions in this town. But again, that's, you're the board, I just want to point that out to you. I'd recommend tailing it further.
Okay, thank you, Kent.
Any other questions?
Shannon?
Well, I don't, I don't think even if we asked them the same sister that, they wouldn't, it's a, either take it or leave it, this is. It's a, either take it or leave it, this is the form we use type of situation, maybe. I would only ask Terry if you could get me a copy of those goals because I missed the whole two day thing.
Another thing about this grant is that...
Not right this second, you don't have to, just so I have it.
Out of all of region eight, there was only nine cities or towns that were selected for this grant. So we're pretty lucky to have been considered, in my opinion. That's part of six states.
And again, finally, I don't want to create a hill to die on when it's not necessary. So if we've been selected and...
Well, we, I mean, of all the grants submitted, we were, nine were selected.
We're in the running.
No, we've got it.
We've got the grant, all we have to do is sign the MOA to get started with our grant process.
Okay. And that's the MOU, not the goals sheet? Or they, you could provide them together?
Yeah, together, yes.
The meeting was excellent, Kent. You weren't there, but it was excellent. And they stressed, said many times over that, you know, these can be changed. Your goals can be changed, you can change the order of them, you can change, you know, eliminate, you can add. It's a great financial benefit to the town. And like Joan said, we were, out of the nine that were awarded in our district or region, we were the only city that was awarded. There was reservations?
Yeah, a lot of tribal.
Lot of tribal.
One other.
And one...
Was that like Colorado or something?
Maybe it was, a city in Colorado. It was mostly tribal. And it'll be a great benefit to the town financially. I don't say, I mean, I understand what you're saying and...
The thing is, you know, if they do some of this, we gotta pay someone else.
Right, right. No, I, I'm, again, I'm not against.
I know.
I want to just point it out, because there are some things in there that...
Well, that's what we pay you for.
Yep.
Yeah. Used up most of our grants, paying mine, but look at this.
Figure 10 hours out.
Thank you, Joan, very much. Any other questions from the board?
We're still unlabelled. So do we need to approve this?
We need to approve this signing of it, yeah. No questions? Leo, you didn't have any questions?
I worked with those kinds of agreements during federal work all the time. And I agree that there's always the potential to get bit, but if you want the job, you have to sign up.
Right, right, yeah. Kind of like, sign here for your soul. Sign here.
Yeah, because I mean, that's how the enforced equal opportunity, affirmative action, and now, what's the buzzword?
DEI.
DEI. You know, you just go with the flow because they're going to change.
Okay, thank you for the comment there, I appreciate it. So how does the board feel? You want to make this pending until the next board meeting? Or would you like to just approve this signing of it and move on?
I'd as well approve it.
As I say, I don't think it's going to change any.
If they're supposed to get like, they're not going to change it and we want the money, so I said.
I'd entertain a motion then.
One, I might add is that if you, maybe add a simple paragraph that states the facts of the matter, that we realize that this is essentially required for this grant or something like that. But, but something to express that this is, we acknowledge, in other words, use their language, protect yourself. We acknowledge, based on the language of the MOU, that this is not binding upon the town of Hermosa and does not necessarily reflect the beliefs, policies, or practices of the municipality. Something like that. Unless you think it would just draw more attention to it and they'd send it back at you, I don't know. And maybe I make them too big a deal out of it.
Joan?
I just have a question. Since we are putting out nothing, what are we protecting ourselves from? They aren't giving us any money and we aren't giving them any. And they are giving us a service, which we would like to accept. But to put that in there, what is it we're protecting ourselves from?
Eric, no, I agree.
Now, you said to protect yourselves, I'm just wondering, in what case would we need to be protected, in what way?
They're giving us something, you know, they're giving us funds, they're giving us assistance, and those kind of things. And we're not giving anything back. I like that relationship. And I suppose, yeah, again, I don't want to make a bigger deal out of it, that it needs to be. It's just, I want to bring it to your all attention.
Okay, thank you. So, do I have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve and sign the memorandum of understanding with FEMA. Any further comments? You quit, well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go.
I'm abstaining.
So, motion carried, thank you. That brings us to...
Can I ask him about that?
What? No, no, that's... What's the third one?
See, those to donate.
Mr. Silversmith?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
No, who's this?
At the last meeting, the board directed the city engineer and I worked together and expressed to Silversmith data that we would enter this agreement pending my final review. I did that, it's a poorly written agreement, incredibly one-sided. And so I changed a few things. I did spend a tremendous amount of time on it because it's not a high dollar deal, but it's an important deal. So as I mentioned last time, I don't want the legal tail to wag the business dog here. So there's some minor things. In page three, there were some things there that were, in my opinion, unconscionable. In paragraph six, at the last sentence...
No, we do not have that.
I don't think it's in there.
No, because it's added to the agenda, so.
I just limited the scope of the language where it talks about under no circumstances shall Silversmith be liable for damages caused or expenses or claims of any kind related to this agreement, blah, blah, blah. Again, you can't contract away the other, a third party's rice, but I just limited, or claims made or alleged by client of any kind relating to this agreement to narrow that scope. Seven is really troubling and the language that I proposed where it says, "Client agrees to hold harmless SSDs affiliates and their respective employees, agents, and contractors from and against, on all costs, expenses, losses, claims, actions of damages of any and all kind, including reasonable terrenies arising out of any actual or threatened third-party claim advanced by a person or entity other than SSD or client that arises from," and the original language was, is it, or arises from or is in any way related to this, to either SSD's performance or alleged lack thereof of this agreement and/or the use, storage, access, dissemination of client's data. They, what they are saying is that if we screw up and data storage, there's a possibility, it happens to the biggest and best companies out there, of, you name it, where things get leaked somehow, information gets leaked. It, so what I did on that, seven, is simply took out the last two sentences and inserted the language, "That arises from client's gross negligence." That's a very, very high standard legally to meet. They would have to prove something that we did, that we did. But what it says now is that for anything they do, that we would cover, we would cover them. So there's that. Finally, in paragraph, not finally, but in paragraph 10, it's just the choice of law, or this agreement is governed by the laws of state of Michigan. And before the meeting, Anthony did say that he had visited with folks at Silversmith and they're in agreement with all the changes I recommended here, but they still kind of want to keep Michigan as the venue for the law and prosecution of cases, you know, if we have, if there is a lawsuit and if they have something against us, or if we have something against them, we're agreeing to sue it out in Michigan, in their county. As a practical matter, and it's just like anything, it doesn't matter until it matters. And you'd have to hire Michigan counsel and hope to heck you didn't get, you know, home to town because you're the out-of-state town or whatever. So what I had recommended there, that it be governed by the laws of state of South Dakota and any dispute arising out of this agreement shall be litigated in the Seventh Judicial Circuit Court in Custer, South Dakota. All parties to this agreement, this agreement consent to the jurisdiction of, instead of Michigan, of South Dakota. I'd like to keep that in there because under the Conflicts of Laws provisions of our statutes and Michigan statutes, it's typically where the wrong occurs. It's called lex locutor is the legal term for it, where the wrong occurs, the location of the wrong. And so it should be in us, in our jurisdiction anyhow. That's the law saying. So if they'll go with that, that's what I strongly recommend we go with. Again, it's a $600 contract, it's very important to us. I'm not suggesting, and they're agreement to everything else, but I would like you to just get that last provision in there, choice of law. Hopefully it's not even an issue, but it is, I say it is until it is.
Otherwise, all the other edits were acceptable?
Were acceptable to them, yeah.
Anthony?
So, so the attorney in New Baltimore, Michigan, made similar review of seven, number seven. And they took out that clause entirely, in its entirety.
The governing law clause?
The whole number seven.
Oh, number seven, okay, good.
They lined the whole thing out.
Good, perfect, that's best.
But they, obviously, New Baltimore is Michigan, and so the attorney in Michigan didn't flag going to another county in Michigan to do the thing. Now, there are some things in the law here that are, I thought were surprising, like when I was studying our lawsuit that we had with Southern Black Hills, that like legal fees were covered because in Michigan and in a lot of other states, you can just assume your legal fees are not coming back. So I guess that would be one ramification, if I'm not mistaken. I know Maine has that, only because my law professor was from Maine, so, in West Virginia. So, so like, that's one difference in states. But I know that like when you buy like Office 360 for Microsoft, they're gonna, they say that you will battle them in California courts because that's where they're based. And that's where the server is based, so they, because this is a cloud-based software, they're considering that what you're seeing is just a reflection of what's actually in Michigan physically.
Is that another data center?
Yes, that county, that's why they picked that.
Yeah, that's pretty much.
Jackson, Michigan. So, so I think that's why they were pretty bent over to be able to, they never had to change ten, the lex locutor.
The venue?
The venue, because it's, it's related to a special part of law when it comes to like virtual servers and softwares and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
But I will say that I would say if we could get them to revise six like you wanted it and seven like you wanted it, and not necessarily draw them all out and then allow them to keep the one for the state, I'm pretty sure they'll have no problem with that.
I was glad to hear that they'll just delete seven because it's a, it's very, very broad sweeping and it puts us on the hook for any single thing that can happen regardless of whose fault it is. Simply put. It would be malpractice for me to recommend you sign this thing. So I'm recommending that you don't unless those changes are made. Choice of law, that's less of an issue necessarily.
Maybe if seven's completely lined out, that becomes less of a liability.
It takes a lot of the fangs out of it.
Okay. And I know they've done it in the past, so that's why, could be a reasonable request.
Do we have the time to have this, to wait till the next meeting then?
Well, we don't have to vote on it, you already voted.
Yeah, you already voted for it.
Pending law review, so as soon as they...
Here's what I would do, and I've done this when I was negotiating contracts with various Indian nations across country or other companies, when I was in sort of game, other companies where you have a South Dakota company and you have a Michigan company, is that ultimately we would agree to a, the US federal district court in their town or in their area for that region, for that district, because it's a federal question, there's two, it's an interstate commerce issue, so to speak, or could be. It's between entities of two separate states. In other words, not the Osage County Court is what, essentially is what they're, where they want to have the venue.
Nah.
I would say, I would say, okay, we'll go to Michigan, but it's going to be the US federal district court for the, whatever district of Michigan that they're in. That gives them their hometown advantage as far as cost of execution of any lawsuit, the defense of any lawsuit. Gives us, I think, a fair playing ground or a litigation ground. Just my thoughts. But, and I don't think they should have any big problem with that. Presuming it rises to a federal question, but I think that would be a good compromise.
Have you sent his suggestions back?
I think Anthony can, you guys will work through that?
Yeah, everyone can talk to their attorney or whatever real quick. Just, I'm sure we can come up with something that would be, that would be workable.
I tried. Yeah, to look at it from their perspective, that they're making $571.
Exactly.
So any time that their attorney spends on it isn't worth their time and effort. So they kind of already said like, but because I have seven other communities that I brought
To them.
To them, and those communities were higher than our 600 population threshold, so their contract value is more, I mean, Baltimore's 12,500 people. So, so then they said that's why they looked at it and spent the time to do that. And so, yeah, I'll pass it along and I kind of got them. I mean, I haven't actually got a confirmation on what I think they would agree on, but I'm talking to the salesman, so.
Right, right.
So I can pass along the comments of Kent and then see what they say.
With paragraph seven out of there, I'm much more comfortable. Regardless of how good a deal is, with paragraph seven was not being deleted, I would recommend not doing the frigging deal. There's too much exposure for, again, for a 600 of our contract, but the consequences of a data leak and people suing them, including third parties, not just us, and we would be defending them not from that. Why, I mean?
So, so I'll try to get the comments that you have, as is, plus the federal court in Michigan. And then if they say, if I get it to the point where they just delete seven, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Because I can be like, how can you get different terms for different communities, what's going on?
Thank you both for this.
Yeah, thanks, Anthony, that was a great training, but.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, went to school, we think.
I know.
Dan?
Before we move on to the table, I just have one more question.
We have one more item yet, but I'll get you. Okay, so next, Donna came in tonight and had a question about whether or not the town could donate to the senior citizens. and had a question about whether or not the town could donate to the Senior Citizens Center. And I informed her, as I knew it in the past, that townships were not allowed to donate in that manner. Because it is citizen taxes, citizens' money, and who, how would you stop? With all the 501(c)(3)'s in the areas and all the kids' projects? Who would you say yes to and who, and how would it be fair? It's impossible to make it fair. However, I did tell her that maybe some laws have changed that I don't know about.
Now, is it money donation?
Money.
Okay, okay. That can be different. The law is very clear that a municipality can gift real or, real or personal property to another entity. You know, whether it's like Hill City getting a stat truck, or us giving, you know, a stove and some wash machines to an entity or whatever. Money is a different, I would say it could be considered a different classification of gift. But I think, I think most likely it comes down to a policy decision. Because if you go to, just exactly what you're saying, where do you stop? You know, there are so many good causes out there.
So many.
And is it such a thing where that there could be a like-kind, not like-kind, but if there's a, instead of money, do they need, number, how much were they asking?
They weren't asking, it was my suggestion.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Can I say, in the past, when we donated to the fire department, it was in exchange for them blowing out the lines, so there's like a trade.
Sure, yeah.
Which I guess they quit doing and didn't want to do, so we quit donating to them. And at that point, we didn't donate annually to anyone.
Anyone.
Yeah.
So it really becomes a policy decision.
Dan?
And that was exactly what I was going to bring up with Shannon on that, and that got tacky. Because of doing that for services for that portion of a back-and-forth trading of services versus a contract. And so the municipality is who ruled back to us and said, you just muddy the water, you're not in a good situation. The money thing is not something that you want to get involved with. If it is, exactly like Linda said, taxpayers' monies, no. In dispersment, yes. If you are going to do any, like say vehicles, anything like that, and it went through our whole process of advertising and nobody wanted to give us a dollar for it, yeah, then we could give that to another entity in that circumstance. But it had to go through the board to handle it in that situation.
Yeah, I, great idea, lovely idea, but it wouldn't be appropriate use of public funds by what.
And is there any way it could be fit into the BB&amp;B funds? I mean, it is a benefit to the town. It's a great benefit to the senior citizens of our area. Dan?
Wasn't that for in-town?
Well, I, I, that's, I'm just asking.
For municipal?
Few, I know, and they're out of the city limits, I thought of that also. I don't know, that's why I'm asking, if, if it would, if it could be used, if, you know.
And why are they getting annexed? Has that been discussed?
They do not want to be annexed.
Uh, sounds like the answer.
That was the last I heard, anyway. So, so if it has to be within the municipality, that cuts that right off, you know, so. But, but little research, maybe?
That just makes the whole where do you stop even bigger because you're donating.
Well, yeah, because then you're going outside.
But, and they were in-town for many, many, many years.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Definitely muddies it up.
Okay, research.
Sorry, Donna. I put luck down.
That being stated, Donna mentioned that the Christmas dinner at the Senior Citizens this year is on the 11th at noon, right at noon. And it's $10 per person. And she thought it would be appropriate if we all attended, if possible. Support them for the, for the year.
December 11th, you said?
December 11th at noon. Pardon me?
I think it's a Wednesday.
Yes, it is a Wednesday, thank you.
A week from tomorrow.
Okay. That's all I know of for legal. Anything else, Ken?
Not that I can think of right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to Public Works. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Dan, I missed, sorry.
I just wanted to bring up for Anthony and Ken about, I see nothing about the chip on here and where we're at on reorganization of that. We're setting that up. And I thought the two of you were going to work that.
I missed the very first part you said, the reorganization, what?
Tiff.
Oh, the tiff.
And whether we're working on that or not.
Establishing a district. No, we have not worked on that. But we can make a priority. The first work session, it was discussed, as I recall, the first work session would be sometime in next January.
Anthony?
So, the, um,
January 28th.
Two things we were waiting on, so we could be going on the tiff. And so, the first was, I'm supposed to hire DGR to review the existing plat and then come up with a top estimate and get it, get hired, right? As I understand it, they're still like negotiating as of early this week. So, so they're, they're not hired yet, they're in the process of hiring their engineer. Because the last email I got was like on Monday, and it was like, will the town require the engineer to provide construction administration services? And I know what that means, he's trying to figure out his contract. And I said, the town is going to make you meet, you know, do all quality control, quality assurance, like, you know, materials testing, not him, the engineer, but the contractor, right? So, but things related to like inspection, and then that, that's done by the town, by Chuck and I. So, I said, no. And that was Monday, so it's obvious that they're, he's still hammering out that contract to sign with Isma. Regarding Preston's, we completed the new plat. And we were able to fit 100 homes on that property that's the town, within the town limits. 99, sorry. But I got a lot of open space, too, a lot. So, I, before I shared it with anybody, I thought it'd be appropriate to share it first with the Preston family and get their input on it. So it's in their hands right now. And, yeah, like this week, I was hoping that I could set up a meeting with Jim and John and Krista, get Barb, and get everything, kind of they understand it and are okay with that route, before then we finalize that plat. And then I'll bring that final plat back to the town and show them. But where it stands now, I mean, you're getting 100 extra homes up there. Roughly.
Very good.
And you got nice sizes, too. So I gave them more, bigger, bigger lots down in the lower area. And then the ones that have the nice views, they were, looked smaller, but they're still, you know, good, nice-sized lots.
What do you consider a good, nice-sized lot?
So, what I consider is like 10,000 square feet.
Put it into acres for me.
Hundred bore, hundred, you know, it's a lot.
Could be bigger than that.
It's about a half acre.
About a half acre, okay, that's what I want. Mine's about a third of an acre, that's why.
Yeah, yeah. They're a little longer than the normal lots, but the land drops off, so it's not like you're actually going to get up to the edge of it.
Yeah.
So, so they're, they're bigger than you'd imagine, but then you're still at least a half an acre of buildable lot, you know? So, so that's, that's where we're, we're at with, with that plat. Also, we had some developments with the 3D-printed company. We've made some new contacts with people who are using them in Texas and are, got a little bit like closer because they put projects under their belt with them. So, we're hoping that that way, when we come, when we come, we can meet those people and go to the, to that 3D-printed home builder and say, hey. Because there's some, Ken, you know, that, we were talking today, that he's an insurance expert. And so I guess there's like an advantage for your homeowner's insurance and everything.
Wow.
So we haven't really like, actually teased out all of the possible benefits. And you want to really have a good comprehensive list of why you advocate this versus that. And so then you can just list all those benefits and people understand why we're participating in such a technology. So that's where we're at. So January, I expect, at the very latest, that we would have something to share on, on that, roughly.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Moving forward to Public Works, Chuck?
Well, I don't have anything on the streets, Dan's looking on those, so there's not, uh, I have some work to do yet on North Third Street to accept the water on red.
Oh, okay.
So, the next thing would be the street lights, we've got some wakers going on. RIA had been advised of them, however, they have not gotten here to fix them. We have two on Folsom Court, Folsom Street. That's, you know, I can see them playing a day from my house. And they, they didn't, they haven't fixed them in like 10 days. So, at 3:00 in the morning during the weekend, you know? So, anyway, that's the story on the lights.
Okay.
Water, we had some extra samples that we had to take in. And I've mentioned before in the past, we cannot mail those samples anymore. Can't trust the post office. They're time-sensitive, so they have to be hand-delivered. Although that's.
If you need help, you can always call me and see if I'm available, but.
No, I'm not always available to run them in, you know?
Well, yeah, you're, you have a lot of things to do that I can't do.
To save the least, we are overloaded big time, you know?
I know.
Schedule. We started out with a plan for the morning and before noon, it's totally disruptive. We have two internal water leaks this morning in houses. And when you discover that the curb stop has been hit and there's no way to shut it off, and you have to go to alter means of shutting, shutting the water off to the house. So, I know where most of them are and, but a lot, a lot of them are in the crawl spaces and under the, the weather wire and it's just a mess. So, today was totally disaster. I had a doctor's appointment this afternoon, so the whole day was just a mess. I mean, we had planned a little lagoon. We're having to make some onsite adjustments. You were there during the big christening and setting of the tank. For those that weren't there, that tank is compartment, the treating compartment of that is five and a half, six foot deep and 43 feet long. So that is all underground, except for the top part of it. So, we're having to make some adjustments, so now that we've got, they had a nice little 50-ton crane just to set the, set the unit and, um, quite an undertaking. So, it had to be undercut eight inches for gravel and sand under the unit. And we have the power in and partial water. So we will probably, with weather permitting, there'll be some plumbing done the next day or so and start the footings and then they will bring the building. They have dismantled the building and we'll get that set up and get it redone and heated and one thing or other, and hopefully we can get it into operation before the deadline of some of the other issues with the new cell that's getting put on. And it's going to be quite a project. So, I'm trying to help Lou, if I can, along the way, you know?
As little as you can?
As little as I can.
Okay.
There'll be some things that I probably will be involved in with it.
Thank you.
And that kind of covers the sewer and.
And I've got to, I'll just add to, I went over to Butler Cat, because Taylor's still stuck over there.
Yeah.
And I haven't called him because I'm sure I will hear an hour-long rant. So, I took pictures of this whole setup. So you know what size you need for the end of the third street. Because you're going to need a waste pit and stuff, so.
What are they drilling, like Charlie O'Malley's across the road?
Oh, that I don't know. That, that's not Taylor, is it?
No, it's supposed to be, um, box elder, wrapping valley well. They've been there, what, six months?
Oh, no, let's leave there six months, that, and all parts goes way better here.
Yeah, something like that, right?
Yeah, it's a very extensive, but anyway.
You know, you gotta have enough size for the drill rig. It's a pretty good-sized rig, and then it needs room for his compressors. And there's like a little trough that goes from where the drill is drilling.
There's a mud pit.
Mud pit, yeah, and so then that goes to a mud pit. So I took pictures of that, so I'll print them off.
And the overflow out of the mud pit, you can actually put more than one end to clarify the water, so it will probably be going into a bill, we don't want that setting up. So if I put in more than one settling pond, then the water would be fairly clear that's going out there. And no doubt, we'll be getting water from us to, to the drilling well. Coming up in the future. Like I said, we're spread very thin, very thin, so.
We appreciate that, Chuck, we know.
That's it.
Okay. Your open work orders, you still have a few, you're working, plugging away?
I had about five of them today.
Very good.
Amongst, you know? There's too many to take on a huge project, so we get some of these smaller ones, including putting the sign up. Some major issues and, yeah, also. Looking forward to the new system very much.
Yes.
It's going to solve a lot of problems.
We read one particular home, and I think you read it once, I read it three times since we read meters, and so, yeah. When it comes automatically into the office, that will be a big benefit. Yeah, so.
And that particular house, that's the Bed and Bear question. Yeah, they do have a big time. So when we were under there, it's coming from, through the floor and about 500 gallons a day.
Oh, okay.
It's beginning to get wet. And a plumber coming today sometime.
Good. Thank you.
Other than that, they're still crudging along.
Okay. Dan, Streets, you have anything to report?
Nope, just same way, working little by little on.
Gravel holding out?
Yep.
We're doing okay there?
Yep.
Okay. Very good, thank you. All right, that brings us to finance office.
No monthly financials I'll have until next meeting. As far as the department updates, I did, South Dakota municipality, in their magazine, highlights a town each month, and so I did sign up for February for Formosa, with everything we have going on. And Jones also provided me some information because she was going to do it, too. So, so we're going to combine them together with our lagoon expansion. And we thought we'd do something with the parade, being our first annual Christmas parade, just kind of highlight that. So, there's the copy of the emails in there, I think it has to be like 400 words, and you can do maybe three pictures or something, so we'll get that together. And I have to submit it by January 10th to be in the February edition. So, we'll get that.
I say, for the parade, I think it's important to note.
I say for the parade, I think it's important to note the resident that was actually setting it up.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Lot of hard work.
Yep, she's done a lot of work, so.
Yeah.
What day is the parade?
The fourteenth. The parade actually starts at six, but there's a lot of things going on before then. Um, hot cocoa and cookies and ice skating and stuff going on at the community center, a chili cookoff. You know, I thought of this, I, um, the town will be doing a float. Didn't know if you had any desire in Benish doing one. I know it's a little late to ask that, but it, you are our main contractor and, and
Main expenditure.
And, yeah, and our main expenditure. And so, uh, think about it, excuse me, yes.
Can I make the suggestion that Benish decorates our brand new free vac truck?
That'd be awesome if that came about in that short a time, but anyway, yeah, we'd love to see you participate in our, bring your family down and get some hot cocoa and cookies and whatever, that would be really nice.
I extended that to Kent as well, told him to toss Santa up as a lawyer.
We do a float only if we can write on it.
Judge Roe.
Y'all's gonna be a.
Y'all's gonna be the elf, you're not gonna get out of that, Don is just really making sure of that here. Anyway, um, I, it's, I'm looking forward to it a lot, I think it'll be a lot of fun.
Next Saturday?
First annual, the fourteenth, no, two Saturdays, fourteenth, so.
Is there like registration information for floats if people want to have a float or want to?
Yes, it's online. Um, and there's a couple of flyers up on the bulletin board.
It's all floating in our newsletter.
Oh, in the newsletter.
Do you wanna grab one of those?
Not really the registration for a float though, right? I imagine if you show up and jump in line, you're probably.
Well, you have to contact.
You have to contact Breezy to have a float in, but it's, it's that simple, just, I think. Joan, did you fill out the?
Then you gotta make a float, right?
Yeah.
A hay wagon.
Whatever, yeah.
Just put some lights on your pickup.
Uh, Deb.
Oh, you got that?
And hopefully we'll get the candles up on the poles tomorrow. Um, Breezy ordered the brackets, but the brackets were really tiny. So we had to run to town today and pick the stuff.
Oh.
Get it put up tomorrow, they will get it up tomorrow.
That's what I looked out the window just a little while ago, I, cause I talked to Breezy and she thought they'd be done today and I think they were supposed to. Okay.
For sure.
Okay, well, thank you for the information and.
Confirmed with the city parks department at Wilson Park that they are gonna give us the surplus next year on their decorations, so.
Thank you for the work on that, you guys. We, that is something that, well, Shannon and I even made many phone calls back
Back in the day.
Back in the day on, you know, hoping to get some, somebody's old, be able to buy somebody's old Christmas sticker. Oh, boy, they're expensive. Yep, I think the, the poinsettias now are like two hundred and, two hundred and fifty dollars just for a, a piece, for one poinsettia. So, yeah, that's.
And you gotta buy the brackets.
And that's tiny, yeah.
The big ones are seven to nine hundred, all enough.
Right, exactly, so thank you so much for.
Well, we, we really need to thank Breezy for this. I mean, she is, you should see the community center, what all she's done over there, got the things set up for Santa Claus. I mean, it's going beautiful.
Good.
And how are they ice skating?
They, yeah, they, if the weather is good, they're going to put water on one of the ball fields down at the fairgrounds and have ice skating. They, they will not have rentals for skates, you'll have to bring your own skates. But they'll also hope to have a, a bonfire type pit, you know, so that you can warm up and.
And I think Ryan bought or got a, some type of a liner to put down, so then he can put the water on it and in the evenings when it's.
Ryan, those can't be cheap.
That's why I said Ryan and Breezy have done a phenomenal job in this town.
Wow. Absolutely. So that being said, um, do we have the float somewhere else on the parade? So we'll, we'll come back to this under old business and discuss this more. All right, um, what else do you have, hon?
Um, well, then we had the work session scheduled, so we had, you had wanted a list of maybe, and Jill and I didn't really get that done. But we do have a work session scheduled for Tuesday, January twenty-eighth. And I guess we'll just need to decide what, what's like the most important thing we want to start with.
So we need a list for anybody that, that remembers or has a passion to change anything or work on anything. Please bring that list into the office and so that we can have a whole consolidated thing to go through. Also, either before that or at that meeting of the priorities, what comes first. And because the work sessions, as this meeting is gonna be a three hour meeting, we hope not to have the work sessions be that long. And so we'll need a priority list for that.
Need a meeting just to organize meetings.
Yeah, exactly, a meeting to org, I, I know, it's just the way it is. So if all board members and interested people would do that, I'd really appreciate it. Okay? All right, next.
And then, so the next thing I have is the town shop, you know, Jerry has vacated the town shop and it's, and we're gonna be using it for the parade. I did go over there and inspect it last Wednesday and he's got everything out of there. Um, I checked the propane and it's actually a little bit more than what it was when he moved in there, so we don't have to worry about that. The utilities have been transferred back to the town. So I think everything's set there. I did give you an example of how we advertised that for, you took seal bids, is how you did it? I believe I put that in a packet. So you just think about that, um, I don't know when you want to do that, in January or?
Well, we probably don't want to deal with it during the holiday season, there's enough to do, maybe so. So maybe we should just have this posted in the first paper in January.
Looks like you have to publish it three times, might as well publish the three in January and then we can
Then, okay.
Do it, look at February.
Well, we could publish the last one in December, or the first one in December and then?
Two in January.
Two in January? Or two in December and one in January?
I mean, it can be weekly, you don't have.
Doesn't have to wait.
Do you have to have ten days in between or not?
Let's, let's try to get two of the advertisements in in December.
Okay.
And put a date on it, uh, for in January to look at it or to, you know, whatever. And, and then we'll have the last advertisement in January, so that we maybe then can possibly have it rented by February first. What do you think?
Yeah, cause then, so then you award the, you'll do the open bid, and then you'll have to, then you had a public hearing for people to come in and if otherwise they didn't agree with who you were gonna rent it to, so, so I'll have to get off, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll get that in the paper, may as well get it started, okay.
So are maybe in the January, the seventh and the twenty-first, so either those could be.
Yep. Yep.
Republic, probably a twenty-first republic hearing and award.
Yep.
To open the bids, have a meeting.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Dan, you have a question?
I don't know if you want to rent that anymore. If you're gonna get a vac truck, you're gonna need to.
Gonna need to store some parts.
Park that in that's warm. Do you need to use it in winter or anything else to house it? And I don't think you want to give that off, you know.
I know it's.
That's the biggest thing.
Will it fit in there, height wise?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It has a, uh, one forty G in there and they're big.
I was gonna say, they had their big grader in there.
Oh, that's right, I remember that now.
So it'll fit, but I don't think you want to give that.
Oh, well, good point, thank you, Dan. Yeah, okay, let's delay this until we know more about the.
Till we know more about that.
Vactor.
Okay.
The free. All right.
Have a little baggie, you go along with it.
Yeah, yeah, that's everything, okay.
The only other thing I had, one was just the holiday schedule, I just wanted to, um, so Christmas is on a Wednesday. And in talking to Linda and Jill and I, we, Jill's gonna take off Monday and Tuesday and then have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday off. And I'll take Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, so the office will remain open, but that way we each get a little bit of a break for the holidays. If you guys are okay with that.
And that is because Custer County, um, voted to give their office staff those days off. They're closed, they will be closed.
Cause they followed what the governors.
They're following the governors.
And Governor Noem gave the state Monday and Tuesday off before Christmas.
The twenty-third and twenty?
I think that office should just be closed, okay, whatever the states do on Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, see, and our policy doesn't say we follow the state, so.
We kind of have, yeah, right.
So, I mean, I get to.
However, so when I told the girls that, I said, you know, my own personal thing, I had to go ahead and add that. I would way rather have the Thursday and Friday off after Christmas than I would like to have the Monday and Tuesday off.
And that's what I prefer.
So, so that's when I said, maybe you girls can work it out and that way the office could be open.
Be open until noon on the twenty, on Tuesday.
Well, Tuesday.
Cause then you have the next following week.
New Year's Eve, yeah.
New Year's isn't quite so, as big a deal as Christmas, but, yeah, I mean, I, for some people, the day after is necessary to have off. I will just say that. So we can discuss that, I would say, at the next meeting, can't we? New Year's dates, but, um, I would entertain a motion to allow the girls to get paid for these days and, um, to have the office closed on Christmas, of course, and Christmas Eve at two?
Yeah.
Three, two?
Well.
Noon. Noon for Christmas Eve?
Why, you guys are very generous today, aren't you? Everybody else? I would entertain a motion in that effect.
I'll make that motion.
For girls to get two additional paid.
The twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Because they're gonna split them rather than what Noem's doing, Monday and Tuesday. One of them's gonna take Monday, Tuesday, the other one's gonna take Thursday, Friday. Yeah, Thursday, Friday.
Yep. Okay, motion's been made and seconded.
You seconded it?
I seconded it.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion okay, thank you, board.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to old best business. A is headwaters economics update, do you have anything?
I think we kinda might do that already.
Yeah, okay.
Probably not quite in order as well as I did, but.
It worked. All right, B is the Christmas parade?
Kinda talked about that too.
Yeah.
Well, we kinda did talk about that, um.
Well, you're gonna come back to it for.
For Deb, yep, did you have something more to say about the Christmas parade? Yep?
No, not, not really, I mean, it's all in his book, he started it too and Sam will be here and it'll be fun.
Send a newsletter, is that what?
And we'll get the, we'll get it up tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
We hope our lights will get up in time.
I guess I have a little bit of discussion on that, I, I hadn't even given it a thought. Chuck and Chuck have donated the trailer that we're gonna use?
Chuck, my Chuck.
Okay.
It's not the.
Okay, I didn't know.
Ferguson Construction would be added sign on the parade.
Is, yes, and, um, helping, you know, doing a little work on the trailer to make sure it's good and safe for, for all of us. We have come up with a plan for it, I don't really want to say it because we want it to be a surprise. We would, um, like to, uh, walk around and give out candy. And, and in a winter parade, you have to hand deliver the candy, you cannot throw it. So anybody that's willing to, anybody that works for the town, contracts for the town, is an employee or a board member is willing to either drive the truck, um, ride on the float, walk beside the float to give out candy, any of the above. So please, um, sign up with Jill for whatever you're willing to do, including if you have any free time to work on the float. And we'll be doing a little bit of that this weekend and, um, I, I'm sure the day of finishing and maybe the day before. Deb?
Is, I mentioned this before, but, um, out here we'll have, uh, lighting of the tree. And I'm setting up a table and we're donating cookies and serving hot chocolate. I did buy a couple of big, um,
Totes.
Totes that were insulated, which I'll serve hot chocolate on, but I might have to have plugged some big pots in downstairs just in case I run out.
That'd be fine, that, everybody's all right with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Joan?
Um, I think we should try to finish decorating the float the day before because I think we all want to do it in advance now.
Be done the day before, you're right, thank you, yep. So, um, that Friday, the thirteenth, woo, Friday the thirteenth, woo-hoo. Maybe we better do it the twelfth, anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll get together and, and everybody can donate their time. Tell, tell the office staff what times they have available. I have asked a few people already, um, who has what available and we'll, we'll work with those, with the dates on that, so. I have, back to the reason I hadn't even thought of that, but this is something that would probably fit into the B and B monies. Wouldn't it? I mean, we're advertising for the town. I don't know, would it? And, and I, and it doesn't matter one way or another, the, like I said, Chuck is donating the use of the trailer and also of the generators. And I purchased, um, nine, eight, eight sets of lights, something I never knew of before. I've been looking at solar lights and by the time this came about, I didn't get them ordered in time. And, but, so I was up in town shopping on Black Friday, uh, totally by accident, I have to tell you. And it was in the afternoon, it wasn't in the morning, so. Uh, but anyway, um, Menards had something new that I had never seen before and their, their battery lights, LED battery lights. And the, they stay lit for two hundred and thirty hours or some darn thing like that, I've never seen them before. So anyway, I bought eight sets of light to put on the trailer.
Batteries, the rechargeable, the double A's?
They're, no, it's, it's, it's all in its own little unit, little battery pack that it has and you just charge it.
It could be USB.
Oh, rechargeable, nice.
So, very, very nice. And, um, I was looking through my own stuff today, uh, I, I have quite a bit of green garland, um, some other lights possible, I have a couple of trees we could pick from, the town has, uh, we found some stuff downstairs we can use. So, uh, but, uh, that is something that, I don't know, if the B B and B, um, if it would fit into that funding, it's just a possibility.
Specific wording to see.
Uh, specific, yeah, and that being said, the lights, um, I'm not donating them to the town except for the use of, for the parade. After that, they go to my, back to my house. So, um, anyway, um, Joan?
I, I was just asking, Dan, what the, um, definition of use of for B and B was and you said promotion of the town, well, that absolutely fits in then.
Mm-hmm, yep, so. So we'll have Terry check into that a little further and then we'll.
Candy and whatnot.
Candy, for sure, mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, any?
I'm ready to go.
Is just candy canes?
No, no candy canes, I refuse, I get enough of those. Okay, so that brings us to new business, we've already covered A, um, back in ten, so that brings us to the Hermosa area growth and development. Leo, thank you.
I thank you, uh, put it in.
I think you, put it in a nutshell, at the end of what I'm talking about, I'm gonna ask for some money, just so you know. What, the handoff that I'm giving you is a quick brochure, if you will, from a company called The Business of Childcare, and they are a consultant out of Shakopee, Minnesota, that we, that Hermosa Area Growth and Development has selected to use to prepare a study for the daycare that, that we're proposing. Their specialty is working with small-town daycare facilities, and the, the process that they use, excuse me, is that they go through a data gathering phase, a workshop phase, and then prepare what's called an activation plan, which is like a roadmap of where do you go from here to accomplish this? And where you can see some of that stuff is on the second page, where it defines what that activation plan is. Now, I said second page, I guess it beams as two-sided printed, I guess that's the third page. Anyway, without belaboring everything that's in here, the reason we're proposing to use them is because of their experience. And unfortunately, Ally's supposed to be doing this talk, but her kids came down sick, so I gotta prove it. Ally, my daughter-in-law, and she could tell you how many facilities they've worked on, and I think it's 200 different daycares, and how many slots, child slots, that they've developed, and I, my, if my mind is right, it's 2,800, because I'm thinking, I remember, oh, that's fourteen dollars, or fourteen kids per daycare, you know, which is smaller than we're talking, but then they go on to, they've actually worked with in-the-home daycares, where there might only be five. So, you know, they, they do the full range. And one of the things that really impressed me with talking to this consultant was that he and, they don't come in and accept our preconceived notion of this is what we need in this town. They actually do this thing. They go and talk to who's doing the daycare now in Hermosa. They wanted, they wanna look at, or to talk with Elevate in Rapid City, is there any potential that we're going to have kids coming this way, looking for child daycare, or from Hot Springs, parents that are going to Rapid City to work, that would want to drop off kids here? So, they're, you know, they're talking about doing a fairly extensive data gathering, and then they would have a workshop here in Hermosa with inviting, what's that buzzword, stakeholders? Except, I don't wanna say stakeholders, because it's more like parents, business owners, you know, who would, you know, who has a vested interest in, in something like this. And that would, and out of all of that, then they would go back and work on an activation plan. Their schedule is kinda given on, again, on this third page. They're, they're talking, after we do the kickoffers, sign the contract with them, they'll do that data gathering, they'll come out here and have that done in 15 days. They wanna have the workshop within 30 days, and have the activation plan, at least the draft of that, like, yeah, I should say, what they're calling the wireframe, in 45 days, and the activation plan within 90 days. And I'm looking at that, how could they possibly do that? Well, it isn't their first rodeo. You know, this is, be the 201st time they've done it. I'm exaggerating, you know, they've done 200 of these daycares. So, that's what they're looking at, and some of the key points is that, that's really nice about talking with these, these people, is they will assist us in pinpointing funding sources for grants and loans. I'm not so concerned about the state funding opportunities or local foundation opportunities, where we, you know, can really use their assistance, is with the federals, you know, and USDA has, and the small business. There's just a number, number of federal opportunities that, that they've mentioned, and can really be of help there. The other point that they said that they would help us on is assisting with setting up, you know, how do you operate this daycare? You know, what's its policies, what's its procedures? And more importantly, they would include assisting with interviewing potential operators. You know, they know the questions to ask to find out, you know, if, if it's gonna work. So, to do this, the kickoff study, the, to get to that activation plan, is a cost of $12,000. And so far, I have collected $6,000 in out-of-town donations. And so, my request is to use $6,000 of the B B and B money to finance half of this study, because basically, it's an economic development study. You know, one of the primary reasons for having a daycare is to allow people to work, allow people to work locally. And, you know, if we're going to want to expand our retail opportunities, or to have light industry here, we have to be able to have workers. And one of the main hangups on, on finding workers is finding daycare. And, and so that's why economic development and, and this daycare are, are basically one and the same. So, that's my plea. I guess, you know, one of the other points is that with a daycare, that would also allow the current eating and drinking establishments, where the B and B money is collected, I think would actually enhance that collection, because it, it's going to draw people in, into town here to collect their kids, rather than having their kids in that.
Put the kids right there.
So, so that's my plea. Question?
Go ahead, Ken.
So, what's, what's this, what's the business model for this? Like, is this a franchise, or, like, you know, so, you know, let's say we pay for the study and everything, so, 'cause this isn't gonna be a town-owned daycare, right?
No, it's not.
This is gonna be a private entity.
Well, it'd be owned by the nonprofit, yes. The, the building, well, that's the current model. We're, we're, what we're hoping, or what, what we've been promised, was that this outfit would come in and actually tell us what kind of business model would work in Hermosa. And so, I'm trying to keep an open mind, but yes, my concept is that the nonprofit would own the, the land and the building, and would hire a contractor to operate. Now, we might find out, we don't wanna get in the employee business. We don't want workers' compensation and all that sort of stuff. But, we may find out that there's a better model. And in fact, they use the word someplace in here, will help you build the, the business model for how to do this.
Help you get the funding and grant money to build the building?
Right, that's, they, that's what they're...
Teach you how to operate it, that thing.
You know, based on their experience. Now, if we go the full route with these people, and I think it alludes to it somewhere in here, they will actually turnkey. They'll build it for us, or, or, I'm saying that right. You understand what I'm saying? Build it for us. They'll be the general contractor, and, and they actually sell modular daycares that are all preconfigured, move them on-site. And they say, if you want a daycare, they could actually have you up and running in six months. You know, turnkey. And, you know, we've checked them out fairly extensively. We sent Ally to Minneapolis to go interview this guy, and she came away even more fired up than when she left. And, and we had a Zoom call with the, the directors of Hermosa Area Growth and Development, had a Zoom call with them, and I was duly impressed with, with, you know, we asked lots of questions, and, I mean, there was no hesitation on answer, answering them. And I think it'd be a very valuable study. We can get the study, and we can quit there if we want. But, and, you know, the study'd be available to anybody. And so, you, you know, the, the town will get, that study to put in, in there, this is what we learned, because it's not, it doesn't have to be specific to Hermosa Area Growth and Development. We're kinda front-end in it, if you will, but it's a standalone study that, that would benefit even the, you know, to have you in the economic development portfolio, if you will. This is what we know about daycare in Hermosa. I'm running on way too long.
What, how, how many daycares do we have in Hermosa now? Or in the area?
In the area. To my knowledge, I only know of one, and that's, used to be Shor, but it's not Shor, but Kelly.
Cole, kinda Cole?
Cole. Well, it's not even Cole anymore.
It's Keegan.
So, I'll just say, just say Kelly Shor, 'cause that's what I knew her as, yeah. I, I don't know, is there any more than that?
I don't think...
Maybe.
And she will not even put a name on a wait, a two-year waiting list.
Aaron?
So, fair, full disclosure, I went to the recent Hermosa Connects, so I was there when we talked about this. And there's some unique, to think about a consulting firm coming in and telling you how to do something like this. At first, I was like, yeah, I'm not entirely sure, but we're a four-day school week. Our daycare needs are particular. We are becoming somewhat of a bed, bedroom community to Rapid. We are trying to get our businesses to grow, and trying, talking to the businesses, surprisingly enough, it's, it's actually really hard to get people to work here, but it's because, in part, because of the daycare. There's no local daycare. So, this definitely has a lot of potential. And I think if Hermosa Development is already putting up six grand, then, and once they get moving, then I think this is definitely something we should consider helping out with.
And I think it really fits within what the B B and B, you know, allow studies for economic development. Yeah. Any other questions I can help with?
Trina?
So, I mean, our population base and our general age of our population, I mean, from what I've looked up, it's like 50 households, 53 households with kids that are under 18. So, and we're talking about kids that are much younger than 18. So, I mean, we're talking about a very small group of people, and I understand that you're also talking about, you know, people driving down to Hermosa to work, and it saves them money, because they can bring their kids up to this point and pay for an hour or two less of daycare per day, so I get that. And I know that we're growing a lot, or we're hoping to grow a lot, but that's gonna take a lot of time. I just feel like it's so new, and we're, we're right at the beginning of the process of this growth, and I, and I know building the facility is gonna take time, too, but I feel like it's a lot of money for, for just a few people to benefit. I mean, maybe in the long run, but in the next two years, we're talking very small group of people. I mean, you're saying, okay, this consultant will come in from the big city, who's done 200 towns. How big were those towns? How much? There's, there's just so many variables that it seems $6,000 is unreasonable at this point in time. If this was coming up two years from now, when we're already building the houses, and people are actually buying them, that would be different than making this today. I'm not opposed to this at all. I'm just saying, the timing doesn't seem wise.
Yeah, we're about 20 years late.
Or...
'Cause the growth had occurred already. You know, all you gotta do is go Highway 40, go Highway 36. That's why it's called the Hermosa area.
Yeah.
Because the growth has already occurred, beyond what our current daycares can handle.
Well, I know that there's a community north of Hermosa that's really growing pretty quickly, but most of those people are northeast of town, and they're going into Rapid. I don't know anybody that lives there that drives into Hermosa to work, or south of Hermosa. I'm just saying, you know, maybe we could do a little bit more research ourselves before we pay for a consultant to come in.
I guess, if you were to, you know, I've done a lot of studies, but I don't even know where to start doing a daycare needs study, and what is the best way to service that need, once you've defined it. I think $12,000 is very, very cheap, compared to most of your studies that I've been involved in.
I was gonna say, our town partner could weigh in on it. That's his profession.
That's his profession. Joan had comment, thank you.
Um, I think Leo's right. I think the need is here. I think the need is also needed now. I think that you will fill it up in your note time, just from the community on the west. I think also, those are the same people that bring kids to school every day that spend money in Hermosa, and if we had fast food, would spend even more money.
Yeah, I agree with that point. Wow, okay. Let's go, let's go to the board members first. Donna?
Well, and we know Kelly has a waiting list.
Right.
Yeah, she has a waiting list. She, I mean, because people can't find daycare.
Kids not that good.
And I, I really honestly think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. Shannon?
I know when we had three daycares in town, they called the office when people move in, and they're looking, you know, at daycares. It's constantly wait lists. Kelly's always had a wait list, even when we had three. So, the need is definitely there, and it could be filled. On the other side, I see where it's Hermosa area, we raised six. I'm just wondering, if we did half, would the county do the other half?
I have no idea.
Would they be willing to chip into some of this economic on this side of the county?
Absolutely. That's a great idea.
Cause if it is county on the west side.
I mean, do a map or something?
Okay.
That's, I think, I think the need is there. I think it's not a bad price. It's just heavy right now on us. It'd be nice to be able to share it.
Okay. Kent?
Um, if, like, just listening to them outside, or, that, sounds like, definitely the, the need is there. And when you participate at the ground level on something like this, then it gives you, you're driving the bus, so to speak, and you can shape a lot of things, and how it can manifest itself. And one of the things I was thinking is that, instead of whatever daycare is now per hour, if it's eight bucks an hour, 10 bucks an hour, 15, whatever it is, I don't even know what it is.
14 bucks an hour, I'd give it seven.
Go to average right now.
Okay.
For, for most people, it's not worth going to work.
Right. However, if you, for people that are working in Hermosa that need daycare, and otherwise couldn't go to work at all because of the high cost of daycare, maybe it's reduced $5 an hour, or whatever that ratio would be, to make it literally just as if you're making $5 an hour more from your job. You know, so it helps our employers in this town as well, which helps everybody, 'cause now you have people, anywhere, trying to find people to work is very difficult. And if you free up the employee, and in the labor force, to whatever extent, that's a major deal. I totally agree with Aaron, it's, it's critical.
Dan?
Daycare has always been needed, but we've also looked at the economic side of it, and that's why we're... And that's why we're doing the Northwater Sewer Line. Is that we knew the annexation needs to occur to get more business down here. And the biggest focus that we've always had on that is, yeah, we're gonna get housing coming in. But if we don't put some of our monies and get more annexation going, we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot because we're not drawing the business to our community. And Anthony, of all people, know that we're, as we've been doing, trying to set our infrastructure up for years, prepared for that. If you don't get the annexation, then we're gonna hurt ourselves. You're gonna get people, we've got a school that's bursting full. But I think you're right, it's gonna take time for this all to happen. And if we want localization, we need to have annexation. And we know what the battle is on that. So it'd be great to have their group start approaching people about annexation along 79 where we need to help and get their involvement towards annexation to help us build a better economic development and see where we can go from there. And to me, that's a big focus of doing a study on that and where we can go and where our advantages are. Put that monies towards that and help everybody in the whole big picture. I think our biggest hurt is gonna be Anthony getting creative on how we take water away from Southern Black House Water and keep it in our own infrastructure and help some here. So involve the engineer, we involve the new Hermosa group, we get our annexation going, we get our business development plan going. Works into the daycare.
Okay, thank you. Deb?
I know that the school has kids stop, after-school program.
Thank goodness.
Yeah, that's true. But they're also struggling getting kids in it. And so they're starting to raise their prices, which is still reasonable at a hundred dollars a month. You know, for the kids to come in for a couple hours and then on Fridays, you know, they're, they're pretty much all day or whatever, but I don't know.
I was, my first original thought when I was sitting here is I kind of went the way Shannon went with maybe 3,000. And, uh, um, first off, making sure that it's legal through B and B and B. And, uh, uh, even when my grandkids were here, um, there wasn't much. And it was hard to find daycare at that point. And I've heard that ever since I have been in this town. And, and again, I, I think that it's gonna be here, the possibility of any of these homes coming in, there could be people that would do home daycares in all these 100, 150, 175, 275 homes that are coming in. There may be people that will want to do daycares in their home. Um, I, I, I don't know. I, it's B and B money, which we have. We would have the 3,000 to, it's there to be used. It's, and maybe, what do you think that your partner can do, Anthony? He can research this also?
Well, I wouldn't mind asking him.
Okay.
Maybe he can shed some light on, you know, what they did in other towns he was the planner for. And maybe he'll say that's, that's the way to go.
Would you please check on that for us?
Sure.
Can we leave this pending, board, until the next meeting and get a little more information? And Leo, if you...
We are going to proceed.
Okay.
We have half of it raised. So we're gonna proceed. If you wanna be part of it, you're gonna have to step up in the plate.
Yes.
Now, fortunately, we only have to put half down to get started.
Oh, okay.
And so it's not like this is the only chance you have. But I sure hate for word to get around that you guys didn't want to participate in this.
It's not that we don't want to. I think we want more information. One of the things that I would really like, such as, I would really like to know, um, the 200 places that they have done. What were the size of those towns? In comparison, I mean, was, did they do this in cities?
Just think about it, if there's 200 daycares and the total number of slots is 2,800, these are, have to be small towns. Cause you don't build...
You don't know.
Can we see an example of what a study looks like that you paid 12,000 for? Do they have that available?
I'm, I'm, I don't know.
So you know what you're paying for?
They have, they have other cases on their website of towns they've done.
I think it's a great idea. Don't get me wrong.
They're mostly rural.
They're rural. I, you know, do I know any...
Yeah, I just scanned.
If they've, if they've done any in South Dakota, I know. I mean, I, I looked at what they said they were gonna do. And it was all the things that I knew we were not wanting to do or capable of doing.
Right, okay. Go ahead, Joe.
Um, Leo, how long have you, your group been discussing this?
A couple of months, three months.
Well, these people have heard about it now for 15 minutes. I don't think it's unreasonable, but they need time to think, absorb. You did your due diligence, you did your research.
No, it's our turn.
Just make a decision right now. Without them doing due diligence, would not be fair to the citizens of town. So I don't, I mean, I just don't think...
Right, but yeah, I guess it's, you know... I hope somebody, you know, we're gonna do it.
Good.
Two weeks is nothing.
And, and yeah, think about it and see if you wanna be part of it or not.
Okay, thank you. Trina?
I just wanna say, I mean, I probably came off as the most critical in the room. But, uh, I wanna say that nobody's, I don't think anybody's against this idea.
Right.
We just, uh, there's a lot of questions involved. And I heard about it two, two weeks ago or something. And I thought, gosh, there's so many variables, there's so many questions, like the ones I brought up.
So thank you for supporting why we're saying a study is the first step.
Yes, and I'm surprised.
Because the worst thing we could do is design a facility without a study. Or to say, this has to be our business model, when we have no experience in running a daycare. And so that's why, you know, we, while you were there, I think you heard us say, you know, we have no business trying to answer these questions. Because we just frankly don't know.
Questions lead to more questions, really.
Anthony?
So I imagine that this company provided a written proposal, like with a scope of work and fees?
It's on the way. Unfortunately, I didn't get it.
That'd be awesome, nice to see the breakdown. That would help you guys to understand.
And then soon as I get it, we can forward it.
Yeah.
Cal?
Just a quick point. So when you said at the beginning, you're gonna be asking for money? And I was looking on here, the only dollar amount I saw in this packet was $950.
That's it.
So then when you hit us with the, you know, a $6,000 request, it was kind of like, oh geez.
Right, but if you read the next phrase after that 945 dollars, like any part of it now.
It's on the back page.
Yeah. A 90-minute virtual session.
Then you've had that.
$30.
Yeah.
But with in-person options and travel costs to come out and do this workshop in person. And then write, and that doesn't include any of the, what do they call it? Activation plan. That's just to do the workshop.
I'm not, I'm just drawing attention that we had no idea what the dollar amount was going to be. And, uh, and the only dollar amount in the packet was 950, you know, so it's...
Sticker shot.
Yeah, it's kind of like a sticker shot, you know? Like if it would have been 12,000 on here, and then you say, but we raised half of it, it's only 6,000. You know, it's kind of like Anthony getting a $2 million bid and then holding it next to an $850,000 bid. You're like, wow, that's a good idea.
They always bring you into it, don't they, Anthony?
Well, you know, just, I, I appreciate your point, but I'll, I'm gonna do a little tap dance now. I only found out at 4:30 that I was doing this tonight.
No, I know.
And I said, Ally, please send me something, you know, to hand out. So I didn't even know what she was gonna be saying.
So you tell her you did a pretty good job.
I did. I'll say, Trina said I did a good job.
Give me money, but did a good job. I didn't say no.
Shannon?
So it would fit into the B and B funds. I get that. Does the county not have something like a B and B fund for the area? No, it all goes...
The county, the county actually has a...
Economic growth?
Well, they have a lot of, quite often they have a lot of money left over in their yearly funding. And you just have to request it. And I don't know if that timeframe is over for this year.
I think it's over, but I'm not sure because I know, like Hermosa senior citizens had to have their request in in July, I think it was.
Well, they've just been talking about it, you know, at the meetings that I go to. And I think it would be worth putting in, uh, a request, even if they don't have it for this year. Say we'd like to be on the list for next year for a request for funding. And, you know, something like that. I think that's worth your time and trouble to look into that.
And that's not denying that we won't help. I'm just saying it would be nice, like I was talking earlier about partnering, you know, just like Hill City helping us out and helping them out, it'd be nice if the county would want to help us help you.
Right. So with that, Erin, you got something else?
Yeah, just quick, it's just Leo here, but the whole Hermosa Connects, they're all on board with this. They're gonna find funding, so they are going to do it whether or without us. So I think at this point, let's watch their progress. And even if they're, the ball is rolling, we can see how things are going. And then maybe we can decide if we wanna throw some in.
Well, the fact of the matter is, I'm guessing there's gonna be other funding needed, you know? Beyond this, beyond the road.
Yeah, cause this doesn't include, well...
Right.
Let's assume that we need something more than a modular. Then there'd be architectural fees and design engineering fees.
Right.
You know, to, to have to come up with something.
Thank you very much, Leo.
Right, thank you.
I would like to suggest that we leave this pending. Uh, everybody give it a thought. We'll maybe get more information, get some from Anthony at the next meeting. And maybe we can get, um, some more information from Leo's group and, uh, and move from there.
See if maybe they have an example of what they provide in a study.
Thank you.
It'd be nice to see.
Drive careful, hon.
What they do.
Right. I believe it's on their website, so yeah. I probably, what I might give you is just a link.
That's okay. I did scan their QR code, so I'll look at that too. Yeah, haven't had time.
Okay.
New to it, so I'm gonna look at it for you.
I know. That brings us to item 15, items from citizens. Um, I don't mean to be rushing you, but everybody's tired of the work, so... Including you, I think.
Well, I'm out of paperwork, so I'm putting the binder away.
Anything from the citizens tonight? Anybody? Dan?
Um, I want to thank the board for all their hard work. Appreciate what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Anthony, I was hoping to give a little kicker to him. I'm always gonna be that devil's advocate, um, as I've watched these projects come through and what's come at us and 25 years of involvement. So I'm always gonna have that little bit to put in there on the side note. And as far as this last little bit on the daycare too, I was gonna say, go to the school too. The school might have some funding, they've always got extra funds too.
So I wanna save some of them for when I need to pay.
About to get a little money from a citizen.
We love you all during the holiday.
Joan?
Just brought to mind that the county wrote, we didn't allow money from the dissolution of the TIF, but they wanted to spend some.
Then there's that.
Not ask.
There is that. And there's also the fact that it maybe could be put in with the TIF. The new TIF district for help on funding and stuff, that's a possibility too. The daycare, yes. The daycare, so.
A community center that may or may not be a daycare.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other citizens? Trusty input. Shannon?
I think I said everything.
Okay.
I appreciate Dan's input, um, he had some good questions that I hadn't thought of. So I appreciate them.
Donna?
I'd like to see the meetings become shorter.
Yeah, trust me, uh, this one wasn't thought that it would be this, but...
I mean, we covered a lot of good stuff, but we need to shorten our conversations instead of staying them over and over and over and over.
Okay. Cal? Oh, anything else? I'm kind of moving back, I know I did. Cal?
I'm going to echo Donna's sentiment about keeping our conversations shorter and end with good night.
Thank you. Erin?
I just wanna thank them for coming.
And mine is also to thank everybody for their hard work. This has been a lot going on in this town, uh, more than ever before. And I wanna thank Anthony and Chuck. And the attorney, everybody that's putting their time, including board members. I know Cal has put in just, I don't even know how many hours and...
It's not as much as you think.
Just makes it look like it is.
And I just appreciate it. I appreciate it all, really. Thank you all very much. Donna, you have something else?
Well, I just wanted to say, with the tank being set last week, it was quite an event. Terry was there, Cal was there, I was there, even though it was dank old.
Dank old.
But it was, it was something to see.
And I will be sending a picture to the paper, cause she is doing, Laura's gonna do an article.
Yeah, it was, it was something to see and something to think we're part of it.
Good news. Kent?
Official happy birthday to Chuck, right?
Yes, happy birthday! And there, there's still cake, so grab a piece. Leo?
One real quick, I want to thank you for putting the plug in for our holiday dinner at the senior citizens.
Yeah, I think it's important.
Next week already.
Yeah, already.
And, uh, also that Hermosa Connects is, is planning a, another mixer the end of January.
The end of January.
And, uh, I don't know if, if, if we can work something out with maybe, you know, it's a joint meeting between the town board and, and Hermosa Connects to get a little bit more participation from the businesses.
I, I will add to that, uh, uh, in a negative way, and I'm sorry about that, but, um, Hermosa Connects last year, um, was voted to, to take over the light judging. And, um, as a town, we did that as a town for years and years and years. And Hermosa Connect took that over and then gave it up this year. And it saddened me that you did not come to the town and offer it back to the town. And so, yeah, we, as, as a town, we did this for years. I don't even know how many years, 20? I, I don't know. But I think it would have been proper protocol for you to offer it back to the town. And you can share that with your people. And I, I know, um, I know it'll be done and it'll, that's, it will be done. And the money is still coming out of the donation to Hermosa Connects, but I still think it should have been given to the town. Breezy, I believe, is...
We asked Breezy if she wanted to make it part of what she was putting together. And she said yes. We, Hermosa Connects, is providing the prize money.
Oh, I know, that's what I said, I knew that.
Well, it didn't come out then.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I knew that. It, you, uh, the donated person, person who...
It was coming out of money you gave us.
No, 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 no. If I, that's not what I meant. The money that is used to pay for that was donated to you last year by one individual, I believe, last year. And, and I've also been told that... And, and I've also been told that, that Hermosa Connects is funding that project again this year. And I understand that. But I still think that the, the, it should have been brought to the town's attention and offered back to the town before it was offered to anybody else. And I don't know that you were a part of that conversation, but it didn't go off as you think it did, that conversation in asking the person to, if they wanted to take that over. So, um, anyway, that's, that's what I have to say.
Maybe I don't wanna.
Maybe not, maybe not. And I'm not trying to. Yes, go for it. On that note, we have no need for an executive session tonight, and I would.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
At nine thirty-one. Thank you, all those in favor. Thank you, everybody.